It is seven o'clock. That seems like a good time to start our meeting.
Wow, so it's last three minutes.
Now, when we call the order, it'll be March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Westford School Committee. Welcome, folks, and we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, consent agenda. We have the warrants which we mailed out, and we have the meeting minutes, regular session minutes on the packet, executive session were sent out.
Motion to approve consent agenda as outlined on this evening's agenda.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? It's unanimous. You? Okay, we're coming up on our budget public hearing. So this is mandated by the state. It's also in our policies that, for our policy, after we approve the budget as a committee, we have one last public hearing where the public can comment on it before it officially is sort of handed over to the town, a town meeting for the voters to vote. And so this is a chance for people in person or on Zoom to ask any last questions about our budget. And we will also have a regular public comment coming up after this. And we'll stick to the two-minute limit that we use for our regular public comment for the budget of the comment as well.
Motion to open the public hearing for the FY twenty-three school budget.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor? Okay, thus opens the public comment on our budget.
I had placed the memo that I think Pat did a wonderful job drafting before our presentation on the thirty-first. It really kind of walks everything through. I don't know if you want me to read some of that, or we just want to open for comment. I just, it's a good, it's a good thing. I mean, you all have access to it as opposed to going through the presentation.
Right.
Again, it has all the specifics, most importantly, the number right at the top.
Right. I mean, I'm open to ideas from the committee if we want to touch on anything, or if we feel like. I mean, one of the things that comes out about this, the way we've done this, is that we've had so much discussion on the budget that it does sometimes feel like, okay, we've been over, we've been over. This is, this is the formal, the formal public hearing, but we have certainly had ample discussion about it. Are there any other comments or questions from the committee? Or from people in the room? Or from anyone on Zoom? Kat?
Okay. No, I just to kind of raise it, it's more of a process thing that maybe we can discuss. I don't know if this is the point to discuss it in. And I know I'd raised it before about the curiosity of the public hearing held after we voted on the budget. And during my charting the course, course, on Saturday morning with Tracy from MASC, we were going through the details of all of this. And in her slides, she's talking about the cycle of the budget and specifically mentions the public hearing happening before we vote. So I decided to try and clarify that with her. And so asked, saying that we have voted and are now having the public hearing. And based on her interpretation of the MGL, she felt that we should have the public hearing before we vote on it because we're, once we vote on it, it becomes the budget, whereas the MGL states that we have to have a hearing on the proposed budget. So it's maybe something to discuss and clarify for next year.
That is interesting.
Yeah. And our, and our policy is from two thousand and one.
Yeah.
So it's certainly worth looking at because, you know, we, I know we talked, and the MGL isn't super prescriptive. It's a little bit vague, but it certainly seemed, they use the word proposed, right?
That's exactly it. It's the budget or the proposed budget, yeah.
When it comes to us, or is it proposed when it goes to the voters? And I think, I would certainly be open to, because we've, and we've talked about an agenda setting, how it does feel a little bit like, oh, is this, is this how we really want to do it? Will we check the policy? We're like, well, that's what the policy is? So I think it'd be worth having the policy.
Oh, the finance subcommittee. I was about to say finance.
But we did establish at the beginning of this year that the policy subcommittee and the finance committee should be working jointly on those things. So yes, that's definitely something.
If you want to grab coffee.
I think we can get a, we can get a legal opinion as well, like whether, you know, if there's, I mean, it might come down that one is not okay and one is, is.
I'm a rule follower, so I like to have the rules in black and white.
But it sounds like it's worth looking at because there have been enough questions about it for, for next year.
Yeah.
It could look different. We'll just have to see that.
So I just pulled the MASC draft policy too, and it does not prescribe before or after either. So I think that's something, nailing that down for the process for next year is actually, that's a really good idea. Because the MASC doesn't even give a timeline.
But there seems to be sort of this institutional opinion about what to do. Thanks.
Chris, so I think it also just bears mentioning that we had a joint meeting with the FinCom and the Select Board last week too, which I thought was really well. There were a lot of great questions, a lot of really good conversation. And that's, of course, up on Westford Cat's web, webpage and on YouTube, if you want to review that. That was, I thought, a really good discussion, so.
Zoom one more time? No hands up in Zoom?
Motion to close the public hearing for the FY twenty-three school budget.
Second.
Okay. Any comments on that? Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous, six, zero. Thank you. I think that puts the budget to bed for now.
Excellent. Thank you.
And it goes to the voters. Good.
Like you jinxed us.
Okay, now we'll move into our regular public comment. So this would be on anything else other than the budget. And again, folks at Zoom, if you, if you have a comment, you can raise your, your virtual Zoom hand, and we will bring you in. Folks in person, just come to the microphone. Okay, I don't see any hands up in either place, so let's move on to informational updates, and we'll start with secret.
Sure. So first thing, I was actually gonna mention what Alicia just mentioned, and I wanted to thank the members of the FinCom and the Select Board for the meeting that, the joint meeting that we had last week. We had a very thoughtful discussion about the budget, and that was a first experience for me. So it was, it was certainly interesting. And again, I just want to continue to thank Pat for all of the work that she's done, even throughout that process, and helping to answer questions. The FinCom, it's a little bit different, the way they'll send us questions almost a month before the meeting as they're looking at the budget. And so, you know, just the ability to kind of work, work through that process. And there's still, I know another meeting scheduled as well too. And one of the things that we talked about was just, I think it'd be beneficial if we were also to have a conversation with the Select Board and, and the FinCom, just even about our full day K timeline and proposal, because I know that there were still, they still had some questions about that. So we look forward to, to doing that in the future as well. This morning, I had the opportunity to participate in day schools, community reads. I know all of our elementary schools are celebrating community readers at different times. And so today I was able to join Ms. Olson's fifth grade class and, and read to them for a little bit. It was, it was a lot of fun. Ms. Olson kept asking the students, you have the superintendent here right in front of you. You can ask him anything you want. What do you want to know? And nothing changes. They just wanted to know what sixth grade's gonna be like. So I was like, this is great. I can talk about sixth grade all day. So, so we just talked a lot about sixth grade and, and it was great though. So I really enjoyed that. I look forward to, to participating in other opportunities like that. And if you get invited, I encourage you to participate because it is, it's super, super fun to be able to go and do that. And then the last update is that the Westford Academy has sent out the invitation to all students in grade six through twelve to submit designs for the new image for the mascot. And their hope, there's a specific, a specific form that's on the, the poster, and chances are, I might have even said something that you guys might have been able to share. So I apologize for that. The deadline's the beginning of April. And that's what I have.
Did you want to give an update on the principal searches?
It's on our agenda.
Oh, my gosh.
So we're gonna talk about it later. So that's what we were saying. Carrie and I were like, well, we have things to talk about. I'm like, well, actually, they're, they're on the agenda.
And I'm actually there when we make it.
It's like a week ago.
That was before the time change. Daylight savings, man. Yep, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, committee updates. Alicia?
Policy, thank you for the update. When I was not able to be here two weeks ago, not feeling well, policy subcommittee will meet this week to send a whole slate of policies up for review. Chris and I talked about how to domino those out so that they don't overwhelm the agenda. We will be meeting Tuesday, March twenty-second, to finalize a bunch of those things, to send them up to the committee for full votes, dominoing out between here and the end of the school year.
And so again, the first one come, first ones come up on the twenty-eighth?
On the twenty-eighth. And those are basically, that first group will be a lot of sort of housekeeping things, secretarial things about how meetings are run. There were some MGL updates. We just want to clarify some processes according to the new MGLs. So those will all come up together first.
Remind me, did we say, are you meeting as a subcommittee again before the meeting on the twenty-eighth?
Yes, because we're meeting on the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, that's right. Okay. And so we had said if there were, if you did want to get those policies out for any sort of leadership review, it sounds like some maybe don't need it, but some maybe would. So they could have it by the twenty-second.
Absolutely.
Come to us on the twenty-eighth? Thank you for all the work on that. It's amazing, how many policies. The committee has gone through this year. It's record-breaking.
I think it is, yeah. I was pointing at Alicia.
I thought you were pointing at yourself.
No. She's cracking the whip.
Other policy updates? I mean, might as well. Okay, student updates.
I'm sorry, I'm putting up my hair.
Hannah, cover for magna.
Sure. So first, update, spring sports are starting a week from today, so.
Actually, somebody, mine started this week, so it's exciting. Yeah, Karo.
So I'm wrong. But we also did a DEI activity today in all of our A block classes, which was our last block of the day. I can't speak for everyone. I think, I would assume the experience was different depending on everyone's classes. But I liked the fact that it was in our classes and not during an advisory. A lot of kids leave school during advisory. Also, having it in classes is, I think, a better environment because students are more familiar with their classmates and their teachers and might feel more comfortable.
Yeah, Hannah and I, it was the last block of the day, so Hannah and I had sat down with Mr. Antonelli to discuss our thoughts on those meetings. On, or these sessions, actually, sorry. I think it was definitely like an awkward conversation. It's the first conversation that everyone's having like this in a long time. So I think it was definitely, there was definitely a silence that went around the room for a couple of minutes. But hopefully, the more that we do these kinds of things, the more comfortable people will be. I did hear some feedback that the, the scenarios that we were going through, essentially, for people that don't know, we had scenarios read to us. We talked about what we would do, and we also had some solutions. At least in my block, a lot of the feedback I heard was the scenarios that were presented were like very, very blatant forms of racism or discrimination, which unfortunately is just, not unfortunately, but it's just not true in our climate at school today. It's more microaggressions, it's more subtle. No one, no one will ever hear these sort of blatant sort of callouts or stuff like that. So that's the feedback that I was hearing. And then also the solutions were, were sort of, some students felt that the solutions were not necessarily geared to the student mind and the way that we think and the way that we go about things. Because like telling people to stop or reporting them, not necessarily as easy. Like, there's a lot of ripple effects of the actions that you do. And I understand the general ideas to have courage to do these things, but I think if we want to help the general population, then I did hear that some students wanted some more student geared solutions. That is what I heard from that. And I also actually had a solution for, or if we were to do this again, to make the stories more tailored to the students. I was thinking, if we could do a forum where sort of we, you would say, you know, send us some stories of any sort of microaggressions you, you get, or you want to, you want to tell the school, and then look at the list of what, whatever you receive, and then include those, so that those are like real stories that have happened to real people. I think that could possibly be more helpful. So that was sort of the feedback we got on that.
Yeah. We also talked about the student forum that we had a few weeks ago, and how it might be good if we could have more of those every once in a while, even if it's not necessarily something that happened, but just a space where students can talk about what they're experiencing in school and give feedback to the administration.
So, so that, so today was the first DEI session. Aside from that, the mascot is obviously, the mascot process is underway. We have, I believe the deadline is till April first. So there's an infographic with all the information sent out to all the students. So we have that coming along, which is really exciting. Hopefully, we can have that for the next year. First week, I realized that the last time we saw you, we had not been out of masks yet. So this is the first time we're seeing you. That school has been maskless. Hannah, do you want to talk about?
I think it's going well. I haven't seen any bullying, disrespect. I think there's a lot of students who are not wearing masks, and there's a lot of students who are, so. But I think the students are doing a really good job of respecting everyone's decisions.
Yeah, in my classes, I think, I see maybe two to three people still have their masks on. And, you know, people are free to go about their day as much as they would like. You know, I, I've not seen any sort of, it's, it's almost a non-issue. We don't really bring it up. And also, actually, I was telling Mr. Antonelli and Hannah this, that I asked a student who's at risk, and I said, like, I just wanted to know if he felt comfortable with me not wearing my mask. And he actually said that he feels comfortable, which is like essentially what we want, right? He was wearing his mask. And I said, do you feel comfortable that I'm not wearing my mask? And he said, he felt comfortable. And so that's, that was happy to hear. And then the last thing we have for you is, this weekend, Student Council had a conference at MASC, at Worcester State University, for the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. That went really well. We had two guest speakers who, one of them sort of talked to us about race, and like, when we think about issues, are we thinking about issues that only affect the people we associate with, or is it affecting everybody? And so sort of looking at that, and that was really interesting and informative. So that's all we have for you today.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for bringing all that. Thank you for attending that. I think that's, that's nice that you were able to go. Thank you for thinking of that classmate who, who is masked for, for health reasons and looking out for that person as well. Thanks for all the good updates. Any questions for students in the committee? Sounds great. Thank you. Okay. It is seven nineteen. We're ahead of schedule, but we're gonna, we're gonna charge on with our first item of business, which is elementary math and literacy data update.
That's great. Chris, if I may introduce.
Yeah, yeah.
That's great. So we have our fourth elementary curriculum coordinators here. We have Mary O'Gorman on the right. And next to her is Julie Kelly. Mary and Julie are our STEM curriculum coordinators. And I know that there's nothing they'd rather be doing on Pi Day than talking shop about data, math data. We also have Erin Hogan and Jen Traverso, and they are our K to five, Jen's K to two, and then Erin's three through five humanities. So they are overseeing ELA and social studies. So these four are the experts in the field that really are so critical in creating horizontal and vertical alignment with our curriculum. They have been tremendous resources for staff, especially over the past couple of years. I know many of you got to meet them in your walkthroughs from the fall. And they're just incredibly valuable to the success of our students and teachers as well. So they're here to talk about, it's a follow-up to what I had shared with you in the fall about how our students are doing. And generally speaking, we're very pleased with the progress that they made last year, despite the fact that it was the hybrid model in a very difficult and different year. And then we also, so now we have winter data for you, and just wanted to keep you along with us in this journey of assessing how we're doing post awkward year. I do want to just highlight the fact that I think this is by far the most focused we've been able to be in terms of action steps and what to address because of the data that we have, which was brought in because of some of the additional programs providing us very specific data. And the teachers have been very involved in analyzing their data. We've provided training for them. So that's been much more comprehensive this year than it has in the past. But these are programs, and I don't want to brush over the fact that much of the progress of our students is because of the incredible staff that we have in each of the schools. And our teachers, like our students, have had to overcome so much with welcoming students into their classrooms, with the masks and some of the other barriers, but also welcoming students in ways that was unfamiliar to them. A third grade set of students or class of students looked, performed differently than what we previously third, incoming third graders look like. So I think the teachers just, I, I just want to highlight the fact that they have done so much, and we're grateful. We have a lot of talented people who were able to overcome this and keep things moving forward. So we do feel confident, looking at this winter data, that we're going to be back on track. Of course, not by the end of this year as to where we typically are in June of any given year, pre-pandemic. But we definitely see the signs of the growth necessary to get there within the next couple or few years. So I will turn it over to the four of you.
Sorry, go ahead and protect.
Please. So right, we're gonna start, we're gonna talk about revisiting student growth and achievement, looking at the winter. So we can go on to the next slide. And first, we'll talk about grade kindergarten through grade five. Here we go. And we can get into the math stuff. So I think in the fall, Carrie presented with you, and she showed you data from the end of last year. So you saw a triangle that really mirrored the RTI triangle that you're used to seeing, where we have one to five percent in the red needing improvement. You know, around fifteen percent in yellow approaching, and then, you know, eighty percent in the green. We're now looking at our mid-year triangle. So don't be alarmed when you look at this. This is progress towards our end of year. So at this point in the year, we wouldn't expect to see all green yet. We're really encouraged by the amount that we do see. On the far right, you'll see what our fall looked like when you looked at those same students that might have been green at the end of the year when you saw Carrie's triangle. Well, now we're looking at current year data, and now they're yellow or red. They probably wouldn't be red if they were green, but they've gone back to yellow because they haven't learned the information yet. And you can see some of the growth. There's been a tremendous increase in the green, where we want to grow, and a really nice reduction in the other colors. So, for example, those that really need improvement, we dropped from ten percent to four percent. So that's already within that one to five percent that we would expect in a typical RTI triangle. And we, between the red and the yellow, we dropped twenty percent, and so twenty percent increase in the green. If we keep on that track, then we would be at the eighty percent that we would hope to be at the end of the year. Now, I'm glad Carrie also said that. That doesn't mean we're all caught up, because we're not satisfied with eighty percent in the green. We certainly would like to see it even higher. But it gives us encouragement and, and hope that we are at least moving in the right direction, and that, given another couple of years, we should be where we want to be with all of our students back on track. So, yep, I think we can go on to the next slide.
This is building upon what Mary was just sharing, and what we've done on this slide is kind of taken the triangle that represented all of the K to five data and broken it out by grade level. What you can't see on this slide, but what is extremely fascinating and exciting is that if we were to look at each school, it's so consistent. Grade two across all three buildings would be very representative of this, you know, cumulative data put together. And that would be the same for each of the grades. So this is a nice little slice of the whole picture. Your eyes may jump quickly to see, oh, look at seventy-something percent for K and four and five are in the green. And then those one, two, and three look a little bit lower. And that's exactly what Carrie was talking about. We have really unpacked this with teachers during PD and principals and assistant principals, and we continue to go back to the adjustment to school for, you know, our second, first, second, and third graders whose last couple of years have been abnormal. So the beginning of the year, learning that just walking around in line and taking turns, listening, and then responding. Well, now we're just very excited about the potential for the rest of the year, and especially seeing that, you know, in every single case, more than fifty percent of our students are at or above grade level. And we just have so much more momentum to keep rolling with that as the year goes on. I think that's all I have for the second slide.
And so when we look at data, we're really looking at two things. First is student performance, which we just talked about and we're encouraged by. But the other piece, and I might argue it's as or more important than the first piece, is that students' individual growth. Because that's the way we're gonna fill the gaps, is we get them growing. And so I Ready does a really nice job showing this to us. So I Ready is nationally normed, and they collect data for many years. And they assign a growth number to each student based on a particular profile or whatever cohort they're in. So if I'm a third grader and I scored four hundred, I'm just gonna throw out a number. I Ready will compare me across the nation to other students that are in grade three and that scored that four hundred the previous year. So that my growth is assigned to me based on the same kind of learning profile that other students have. So they assign that growth number. When the end of the year hits, we hope that students, all students have grown a hundred percent, you know, that reach their growth number. At this point in, in the year, mid-year, our students have met, or they're fifty-nine percent progress towards their growth number, which we were really encouraged to see because, first of all, our school started slower mathematically. We spent time developing those social and emotional, you know, relationships, building that sense of belonging, which is our whole theme this year. And so we said math and all the curriculum kind of started slower. Sometimes we know we go slow to go fast. So in a typical year, we'd be looking for fifty percent growth. This wasn't anything but typical, and we've already exceeded that at fifty-nine percent. And that fifty-nine percent represents the median growth, so that if you took our first graders and up to fifth grade, lined them up from lowest growth to highest growth, the student in the middle was at fifty-nine percent. So there were students that made less growth than that, and students that made more growth than that. But, you know, that median average was at fifty-nine percent. So we were really encouraged. As a matter of fact, twenty-five percent of our students have already met or exceeded their end of year growth. So it's really, really encouraging. I mean, so we couple that with our performance, and it gives us a sense of, yep, we're doing something right. We're moving along at the right pace. And our I Ready consultant did say that this is, of all the districts that she's working with, this is the highest amount of growth that she has seen relative to others. So that was just her anecdotal confirmation. I tried to get concrete numbers, and they haven't got back to me, so I wasn't going to say that. I didn't want to, I didn't have any. I didn't want to, I didn't have any, but I can share that, that information with Carrie. So yeah, so the growth number is good, so we definitely feel as if we're moving in the right direction. You can go on to the next slide.
So basically, just to kind of wrap up the picture of math from our mid-year assessment, which happened January, and what we're, how we're responding to that data moving forward, we just have kind of like three big ideas to share with you. And the first one is really using the data to help us plan our instruction and make sure that it is very strategic and targeted based on what each individual student has in their kind of like math toolbox right now. So the reports are so exciting. We can look at individual student reports, classroom trends, we can look at mass standards, and then we can also see district trends, which is really exciting. So one small example of how we're using that is, I could see all the K to 2 district-wide data, and on a standards assessment, I could see that second graders, like a good handful, and first graders are both struggling with one piece of the word problems standard. So word problem standard is like this long in the state's frameworks, it's so long. But comparing to a comparison type word problem is throwing off so many of our first, but also second graders. So we've been able to find lessons and resources and share that information with teachers so that we can then follow up with formative assessments and see how are we plugging along. So that's just one exciting way that this nice data is kind of used in many levels.
And just to piggyback on that, we have looked at district trends, and we can see how we're doing overall, but what's really important is each individual student. And so with this, such specific data, we're able to go dive in deep and look at each individual child, so that really as a team, the classroom teachers, the special education teachers and staff, and our math interventionists are able to really specifically target what students need, so they're able to meet each student where they are. And that's so important this year, because we have students all over the place. We talked about growth, and we talked about performance. And when you look at a student profile, there's really four quadrants. They can be low performance and low growth, and we're really, really taking a hard look at that. They can be low growth but high performance, you're doing something right, let's keep doing it. They could be high growth, high performance, and again, that's great. And then they can be high growth, I mean, low growth but high performance. And so we're talking about stretching those students. Some students need to be challenged more. So we're not just dealing with the students that are struggling, but we have information about how we need to extend learning for those that are getting in and need more of a challenge. So that's, you know, it's what we do with the data that's most important, and we are doing stuff with this data that I think is really exciting. When I say "we," I mean the teachers and the special educationers and the math interventionists, not just Julie and I. The teachers have really, you agree, they just really embrace this and are doing a lot.
We are doing everything, yeah. No, we're just kidding.
We're doing a real, they're doing a real lot with this and really helping the kids out.
And we've invested a lot of time and energy into kind of unpacking these standards, and it's exciting, but we are going to keep that going. So we have been working closely with the IREDDI consultant, and teachers have had at least four hours of time with the representative from IREDDI really unpacking, what is this tool, how do we use it, what can we do with it, what next? And Mary and I continue to follow up with that so that the momentum isn't lost in between, you know, the three times a year where the students take the assessment. So we really want to emphasize that it is exciting that we have this resource, but the students are not making this growth that Mary talked about because they took a test. They're making this growth because we're using the information from the assessment to help determine what next, and to really be strategic and targeted. So it's rewarding when we can see those changes, but to know it's not just the program that's doing it, it's the way that we're using it, which is really exciting. That's enough for math, so on to Erin.
If we have math-specific questions, should we do them now, or should we wait? Do you have a preference?
It's entirely up to you.
Do we have math-specific questions? I would say maybe it's, maybe we pause and do that while it's fresh and we're still on these slides.
Sure.
Okay. Alicia?
I have not a question, but a thank you, because when we did our building tours at the beginning of the year, we did not just facilities, we also spoke with a lot of the curriculum coordinators. And we were able to make sure that IREDDI was on our radar for, when we were talking about the various funding mechanisms. So I really appreciate that we got to have that conversation with you all at the very beginning of the year, so we could keep pushing forward, because the proof is in the pudding. It's, it is playing out, it is paying out in dividends for us. So I really appreciate having had those conversations with you all in the fall.
We appreciate it as well.
Gloria? I appreciate seeing all the data and the numbers and understanding how it's being used, but as we know, the data can't measure everything. So I'd be curious to know how students are doing in terms of their confidence with math, and their comfort level, and if we are kind of doing these additional assessments to get the data that we can then use to help students, how do the students feel about those assessments? Is that causing any additional stress or anxiety? There's always this tension of, yes, you want the data, but we don't want to amp up that.
So I'm kind of glad you asked that, because it's not an additional assessment for them. What we did is we got rid of our old beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year assessments. And so it replaces an assessment, it takes less time than the old assessments did, and it gives us so much better data. So not, do all students love the assessment? No, I'm, you know, I can't say they do. I will tell you, though, I've had someone say, yay, we're doing IREDDI.
Some love it.
And we're not just at all grade level. Some really do enjoy it. But do all of them know, and could there be stress on some? And we actually talked about that at our training, breaking it into smaller chunks, you know, giving them a smaller setting to take it in, doing it in a small group. So we are very cognizant of all of that, but it wasn't an additional assessment. This replaced something, and it's just so much more valuable.
I think additionally, at the K to 2 schools, there was a lot of angst around the kindergartners, especially taking, you know, a computer-based assessment. It certainly is not standardized, because every person takes a different test based on the way it adapts for them and the environment that suits the student best. But the, a few kindergarten teachers were early adopters and said, let me try in the fall too. So not right in October, but maybe like closer to Thanksgiving, they wanted. And as soon as they did it the second time, they, oh, I'm so glad we did it the first time, because the second time, it was just like so much more streamlined. And then by the spring, it might even not even feel like an assessment is happening, because the students just become so much more accustomed to it, and it just becomes part of the, part of the day, so.
One of the different things about this particular assessment, that they were very thoughtful in working with the teachers, and then therefore the teachers were thoughtful with the students, is this assessment, students progress through it until they're not, until they're struggling. So regardless of how strong you are in math, at some point, you are going to not be able to successfully complete the answers. So we were worried about, you know, the students who usually, or have, there are some students who typically can answer a test and feel like a million bucks, I got it all correct. And so this is something a little bit different. They go into this space of what could be discomfort unless you're proactive, and I have not heard any negative feedback about students struggling in that regard.
There's definitely, it's a, there's some growth, you know, every student isn't like as excited as some, but I think in time you'll get a lot of those, like, you know, last few onboard, so. And in their day-to-day math, they are playing games and having so much fun, and lots of math confidence and excitement out there, because that's what we love even more than, you know, the data.
I think that's what we saw on our tours of the schools. We were seeing that, and it was great to see.
Can I ask, on the benchmarks that we're using this year, are they like typical for most years, or have we adjusted kind of what we're comparing them to? In that last slide, you know, how we're talking about needs improvement, approaching, you know, grade level, is that kind of comparatively speaking, the same standards as previous COVID years, or have we adjusted for this year?
So you're talking about like the green, yellow, red?
Yeah.
It has not been adjusted whatsoever, and those are the colors and numbers that are provided to us from IREDDI, which is based on, you know, many, 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 many districts and students across the country using this. So we're not adjusting the benchmarks at all.
And one other question, then? I'm just curious as to, you know, the grade one, two, and three, in terms of their approaching, they seem to have quite bigger, like, yellow spots or whatever on that. I'm assuming this is probably COVID-related, but I'd just love to kind of hear, is there anything in particular you're doing for those particular grades, or kind of targeting, or, you know, because the grade, the fourth and fifth grade are, you know, what is it, 17, 20%? I'm just curious.
I know. So for the interest of, you know, visually, we actually do have a report that can show the bar from the fall, and then matched up for every grade level, so you can actually see how much the yellow is shrinking and how much the green is growing.
Yeah.
And what we're doing for all kind of is representative of that, but, you know, just building student capacity and making sure that our structures are in place so that we can get with those kiddos in small groups and give them the Mac that we know they need. It's the same for all the grade levels that we're, but that bar is growing very quickly, so we'll have to show you later.
Yeah, no, no. But you make another interesting point. We have no previous data, so we don't know if this has been a trend for years and years and years, which I think is part of your question, or whether it's COVID-related. We do feel like it's COVID-related, but it will take us a few more years of this type of really detailed data to be able to tell if it is or isn't. If I think about MCAS scores in the past, what we have for third grade, third grade has always done just fine, so I do think that it's COVID-related, but you're right, we don't really truly know.
And we know that the second grade data is based on second grade standards and expectations, and second grade teachers, for example, weren't able to come out of the gate starting with this second grade curriculum. They had to spend time, probably adding up to months, doing, focusing on prerequisite first grade that was exposure versus mastery last year. So they wouldn't be, so we do think it's COVID-related, because they aren't in March where they normally are in the curriculum, but, which we said, that's fine, that's expected, we don't want you to be, because then you could be rushing through it. We've got to adapt to the students. And so the standards that are exposure versus mastery, we're tracking so that the next grade level will incorporate those, so that will wash out over time.
And you have enough resources for those grades? I'm just checking.
We're finding that out. We really think so.
Come back to us.
To Carrie's point, Mary and I dug really deeply into everyday math curriculum, you know, unit four and five, kind of where the students are now. And these prerequisite skills are based on current grade level learning from early in the year, where at the beginning of the year, the prerequisite skills for unit one and two was relying on the year before. So we're feeling excited that there's this much green right now, and as they're moving into the year, they're, the prerequisite skills are here. And so we're kind of making that shift.
Awesome.
We're excited about it. Geeky.
Well, let's stay geeky. Out of curiosity, does the IREDDI performance standards, are they really well-aligned with our curriculum and the state standards? And then I guess I'm just curious, how does that align? Nationally, are the standards for IREDDI consistent?
Yeah, the Common Core state standards, national standards, are, mirror the Massachusetts frameworks almost exactly. There might be, and the last adjustment to the standards in Massachusetts made them closer aligned to the Common Core. So they're very, very, very much aligned. And we found that the information that Bridges, I mean, that IREDDI gives us matches perfectly with our intervention program at Bridges. We're getting the same information about the students on the two things, so we feel really comfortable about that. And we did take a deep dive into everyday math, and we are seeing that it definitely aligns with our program, although we're going to use this data to see if there are some weaknesses in our current curriculum, because it could be. For example, comparison problems in first and second grade are starting in kindergarten, looking at that, and then beefing it up based on that information.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
I had a quick question, and you might have just touched on it, but one of the bullets said something about the Bridges intervention program. Could you touch on that? Because I immediately thought of our summer program, but I don't think that's what you're talking about.
Different bridge. Okay. Sorry. Well, at grades three to five, our math interventionists use the Bridges intervention program, and we really target, we have, even before we had IREDDI data, we're targeting prerequisite skills for the grade, because that's how we want, the only way you're going to move ahead is to fill those gaps. And then this year, thanks to Courtney and a grant that she wrote, we have Bridge is Intervention for all of the special education teachers. So they're able to use it as one of their resources. They're not all using that exclusively, but they're able to use it as one of their resources. So that's been really great to tie together, that's what that is.
That assessment data comes a lot more personally, so through an interview or based on watching a student complete a handout, and to hear and see that that data is really directly connected, what the students can and cannot do in this environment, like very close and one-on-one, versus the computer is rewarding, because it's kind of showing us how reliable even like the bigger, they're removed from their teacher, they're, you know, plugging away on their iPad, but it matches up.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, and we will move on to ELA.
Moving on. So yes, we will start speaking about ELA, so you can move on to the next slide. So we are going to start with grades three to five. The data that I share with you and that Jen shares with you comes from our DIBELS assessments. So that measures various early literacy skills to predict how students' reading comprehension will be. So at grades three to five, students read a passage out loud for a minute, and we keep track of their, how many correct words they read in that minute, and then their accuracy. So this year, every student grades three to five had those assessments. So we looked at accuracy first. So you can see in the fall, 87% of students in grades three to five came in meeting grade level benchmarks for accuracy, and in January, we were up to 91% of students meeting those benchmarks, which I was really thrilled to see. Based on our fall data, we decided to shift the focus for our reading interventionists, so they've been working really hard on breaking apart and decoding multi-syllabic words, which was not a focus for them before. So throughout the beginning of the year, when I would visit them, they were saying, wow, we're really seeing improvements in students' accuracy, like, I really hope that our data shows that, because we're really seeing that, and I was thrilled to see that it does. So that was the accuracy. And then if we look at correct words per minute, students, 83% of students started the year meeting grade level benchmarks. Now we're at 86%. So there is growth there. And also, another tidbit to let you know is that the benchmarks do increase. So students had to read approximately 20 more words in a minute in January than they had to in the fall. But since students are reading more accurately now, we can start to focus more on their rate, since they're reading words accurately. So that's grades three to five as a whole, and then if you want to go to the next slide, we can zoom in a little. So I chose to pull out grade three, because based on our fall data, that was the grade level we felt like we needed to target more support for. I think we've kind of noticed that as a whole. So same assessment, but just specifically for grade three. So for accuracy, 81% of our third graders came in meeting grade level benchmarks for accuracy. In January, it was up to 88%, so that's a nice 7% increase. Thrilled to see that, we're definitely on track. In order to look at comparisons, I did take the past five years' worth of data, and typically we are at 92% at this time of year, so we're definitely on track. We still want to keep this as a focus, but... So we're definitely on track. We still want to keep this as a focus, but our growth is looking great. And you can see for fluency, similar to what we saw grades three to five as a whole. So grade three students came in at eighty percent meeting grade level benchmarks for correct words per minute. We grew to eighty-three percent. Again, keeping in mind, they did have to read about twenty more words. We are typically at ninety percent. So that shows us that fluency or rate is something that we want to focus on more in depth, now that they are reading more accurately.
Okay, so we'll shift to, um, the primary level. And, um, these are basic early literacy skills. So for each grade level up to grade two, there are different predictors that are going to let me know, like, the real heavy hitter. Like, what is it that's going to put a finger on exactly whether or not these children are going to succeed in learning to read? So the ability to segment phonemes, again, all DIBBLES measures are timed for one minute. So I primed Erin, just so you have a sense of what it is. Okay, so Erin's my student. I have a script, I follow it. Then basically, I'm saying to Erin, Erin, tell me the sounds in flag.
Uh, uh.
Okay, she has no print, she's just saying sounds. So for one minute, we give kids words, and they take the words and cut them into little bits. That's this subtest that I'm demonstrating for you. It's a critical element in children learning to read, because literacy is based in language. So this year, we implemented, and hats off to the K-teachers in grade one as well, we implemented the Hegarty program. And you'll see the bar in the middle, we have ninety percent of children in Westford in kindergarten meeting the benchmark for this skill. The bar to the right is what we typically see, a five-year average of children in kindergarten in Westford. So this is the highest that we have ever seen, and it's a tribute to the teachers learning it, taking it on, and implementing it in the classroom. And I think some of us got to see it on the tours. So, um, this is an amazing, amazing outcome, and I think it will really make a big difference for our students moving forward. So the big heavy hitter skill in first grade is nonsense word fluency. Do you understand phonics and how to know how to apply it in words that you would have never seen before? So we measure this in two different ways. Again, I have enlisted Erin as my model. So, you know, there's scripts in, but this is what it looks like. Okay, so all nonsense words. Erin, please read the words.
Ah, p, n, e.
That demonstrates correct letter sounds. So again, in one minute, how many of those sounds she can give me? Okay, at a minimum, I'm always measuring this. So that's the first bar graph. This winter, eighty-one percent of our students met that benchmark in first grade. And what we see in Westford in the winter of first grade, eighty-one percent. So we are on track for that foundational skill. Now, that's great if they know F says f and O says ah, yay, but that's not how we read. So where I really want them to go is, Erin, read the nonsense words.
Fap, mep.
Okay, so I'm also measuring that at the same time. How many words can they just read? So seventy-eight percent of our current first graders can blend accurately and automatically in the winter of first grade. We're typically at eighty percent. Still phenomenal numbers. And then when we look at second grade, oral reading fluency has a point-nine correlation with comprehension. So after first grade, once we hit oral reading fluency, that's the one we're, we're really working on. Um, so eighty percent of the students are reading accurately enough to help them comprehend as they read. That we typically are at around eighty-seven percent. Okay? And then for words correct per minute, again, eighty percent of the students are meeting that benchmark. Again, they had to gain twenty words, and I think it's seven or eight percent better in accuracy, right? So the rate's raised. Um, and we're typically at eighty-six. So the gaps are closing slowly and surely, and this is very encouraging data.
So the eighty percent from the from one side to the other doesn't, should, mean no growth?
Absolutely not.
Because, because the benchmarks continue to increase.
And the dark is, is the dark the five-year average?
Five-year average. Yep. Okay, thanks. So what are we doing according to this data? So we're really being more specific and targeted for all of our students. Um, we're really targeted those foundational skills that may be a little haphazard after the past two years that we've lived through. We are doing more foundational skills-based grouping in classroom instruction, supporting teachers in understanding how to take on that task, but also for our interventionists and small group intervention.
Um, and to stem off of that, we've been doing a lot of ongoing professional development. So we've been meeting with teachers, whether it be in curriculum meetings, outside of that time, pushing in, modeling. Our literacy specialists have been doing the same thing. Um, we've been completely thrilled with the team that the literacy specialists and the classroom teachers have really created and kept going, but even increased this year. Our literacy specialists are working so closely with teachers, and we've just been so happy with how the doors have opened, and, um, they've been partnering so nicely together. And our reading interventionists, a lot of focus has shifted and has become more specific and targeted, so they're working really hard. They've met with us many times. They're working daily with the literacy specialists. And two of our schools have had the opportunity to benefit from our Early Literacy Grant Consultant. So she's been working at those schools and with us. Um, and Jen and I have been able to partner with her and with principals and literacy specialists to start to disseminate that information to the other schools as well.
And, um, the program, programmatic improvements that we've worked on in the literacy world, so obviously Hegarty, have you seen? Um, the latest research on how children map words is by looking at every single sound in a word. So how we're teaching irregular sight words, like the word said, um, a lot of our teachers are taking on the heartword approach. It's different than memorize this word, what is this word, look at it, what is it? It's analyzing words in a new way. Read Naturally Live is a fluency program that interventionists and classroom teachers are using to improve fluency outcomes. Lexio's a suite that addresses all the areas of literacy. And, um, another layer that we've been putting in are decodable texts. So kids have the opportunity to, when the, when the purpose for instruction is to become automatic with the code, they have a way to use books that are specifically designed on a specific phonics target and skill to help them practice it and become more automatic.
Thank you. I, you know, I just, my quick comment is just, I'm, it's remarkable. A, I think this was a perfect presentation to bridge to what we saw in the classroom. Like, I feel like we got a good like, kind of qualitative sense then, but to see the data really helps too, and, and to hear the anecdotes too. I think it just gives a full picture of of what we're doing, um, to meet the needs. But then also just, I think especially with reading, I'm struck how, no math too, though, like, how different things are, maybe from when I was first on the committee, and maybe we'd be in a classroom, or as a parent volunteer, way back when in elementary classrooms, just how the methods have evolved and improved, and the data, and, and, and so it's exciting to see all of that. And I think we're seeing the, the good results of that.
I'm glad you didn't say when you were in those grades. Because it truly is a different world, completely, and it has changed even just in the time. You're right, that since you've been on the committee.
Um, ELA-related questions or comments from the committee?
I'm, I'm kind of curious, actually. You mentioned the Early Literacy Grant Consultant. You're working on, like, the two schools. Have you seen with the data that you were collecting, like, in math, they were saying, like, regardless of, of the school, it was kind of consistent? I'm just curious to see if you saw the similar results across the boards, or, and with these two specific schools you're working with, did you see kind of maybe slightly higher scores, or just curious?
Yeah. Um, not leaps and bounds, but there are definitely specific grade levels in areas where the data is, is stronger in, um, the schools that have the Early Literacy Grant. Uh, the Early Literacy Grant schools also have, kind of like IREDDI, I think of it, um, the STAR assessment, which is a computer-based reading assessment piece as well. So, um, and the grant also pays for teachers to work after school. So the amount of PD that the teachers have gotten, um, and not every teacher in the school is involved in the grant. Um, and we're, we're doing lunch and learns. Teachers are coming before school for, um, seminars. They're, they're coming after school. Um, and then, but we're also bringing in, so one of the activities that the Early Literacy Grant, last year, we focused on phonemic awareness and phonics, and this year, we're focusing on language comprehension. So the literacy consultant was doing, uh, an interactive read aloud. So a read aloud is just what you always think of it, but the specific words that we pick out to teach and the questioning that we ask, and the way we teach kids to speak to one another about the book is what she's modeling. And so I invited the literacy specialists from the other schools to come and watch this model lesson. And now it's bleeding out into other places. So the data is a bit stronger in our literacy grant schools, but, um, it's strong in general. But we are looking to spread as much as we can in a reasonable way, um, for the other schools.
Are we going to get that model for our community, uh, read, reader?
Oh.
Because I don't know about anybody else, but I get nervous reading to a group of twenty kids.
I'm just curious then how long we have this program kind of going with the grants and the consultants.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Sounds amazing.
Yeah, so, um, it is supposed to end this year. There is a lot of talk, so it's been a fast and furious ride. It really has. I just can't, I cannot say enough about the dedication of our educators and the way that they've taken, I mean, they started, you know, we started in fall of 2020. I mean, it, it, it has been an amazing ride. So, um, it was fast and furious, phonemic awareness and phonics, and it's been a little less fast and furious, but still at a rapid pace for language comprehension. So if the grant continues, and we keep hearing talk of that as a possibility, next year would be just really digging in on the content that we've learned and really embedding it and refining it. So if it continues, we hope that we would continue. You should know that we are legendary in how phenomenal Westford is, I'm just saying. Um, so it is a possibility that could continue, but it is technically supposed to end this year.
I do think we're in a great place, though. So, um, for the three to five level, it's only one third grade, and there's only a couple teachers, but they've been so into it that teachers who are not part of the grant are still doing these things and coming and watching and participating. And then we're starting to hear from the other schools saying, hey, what's going on with this? So even if it doesn't, we definitely are prepared to, um, continue what we're doing, so.
We met today about how that we're going to map out a plan to scale it, even if it does end. So we, at, at the end of this year, we won't need the grant to continue the work that has already been, been done.
Awesome.
And I wanted to highlight, um, both principals too. It's not, you know, the teachers are sweat, blood, and tears, but it, the additional work for the principals involved in the grant, and specifically at Erin's level, because she only has one grade level involved, Lori's been especially smart in utilizing curriculum meeting time and planning with Erin and the consultant about how are we spreading these practices to the other grade levels? So, um, there are masterminds behind the scene in the way that, um, we're utilizing time and resources.
It's been great seeing teachers have the leadership role too, for the ones that, who are participating and spreading it that way too. It's really empowering.
So great to hear.
I just have one other question then, and then I'll be quiet. I'm just curious, I know all this data is on reading, but as we know, ELA covers, you know, writing too, and I, I'm just curious, have we got any, um, idea on where we are? I know it's not as easily, um, measured. Um, but, you know, I think it's such an important, obviously, component of ELA. Yeah.
Yeah, so our teachers do, um, a pre and post for three genres of writing, narrative, informative, and opinion. Um, and so that is not data that we collect. Um, we do collect the end-of-the-year data. So that will be data that we could have and share with you at the end of the year. Um, but yeah, it's, writing is so complex that there isn't a clean, neat, easy way to collect that data for sure, but I'm glad that you asked. Um, and teaching's happening around it all the time. Erin and I are involved in, um, an approach to teaching writing, and we were working together in a fifth-grade classroom, where we're using, um, self-regulated strategy development, which has a really strong research base. So there are lots of places where we're being mindful, systematic, explicit instruction in teaching kids how to approach the task of writing. It's the heck, the second hardest thing we do as human beings.
Yeah.
And we, with, um, our reading comprehension assessment, Next Step in Guided Reading, at the three to five level, we have also, there's a whole class assessment piece. So we have had teachers have the students write a summary with it. Again, I don't collect that, but we've been talking about how you can look at it to inform your teaching, so that is something that they are doing. Um, and we do collect that data as well, not the summary piece, but the actual reading comprehension data, so.
Questions, Valerie?
Um, I, I might get this answer in two weeks anyway, but I was wondering how all of this works into parent-teacher conferences that are coming up? I mean, I, I know this is really good timing, right, to know how the district is going and how the grade levels are going? But we don't, parents don't usually see this level of information in a parent-teacher conference, right? Like DIBBLES numbers and IREDDI.
They don't go out on report cards or anything.
Right.
Yeah.
So this is
A conscious?
These, yeah, this, this data is one piece of data that we, we use to see if it's representative of the whole. But the parent-teacher conferences is a more holistic view of how the child is doing. So from a teacher point of view, um, A, it, it can be one piece of information to help drive what they need to do in class with each student, and how to break students into small group, and then that type of interaction would provide them with the most, um, applicable data when you're talking about how to report out with a parent. So it's either driving what they have to do and how they're interacting and kind of assessing and, you know, jotting down what they're noticing in real time, and/or validating what they are seeing in the classroom. So I think what, what we want to make sure that we never lose sight of is students just as a number. So that, that data is a great dipstick to see where we are and what trends there are. But the, the classroom teacher with their day-to-day experiences, this can help inform that, but that's what we want to continue to focus on.
We did create, um, discussion guides for classroom teachers based on, so for example, in the literacy grant, and it's just going across the district, the simple view of reading. So when we're talking about parents, let's talk about word recognition. How is, you know, the DIBBLES data is have, but then the formative data that's happening in the classroom? How are we doing with phonemic awareness? You know, can they break down the sounds? How are they doing with word reading? And then language comprehension. When you're doing a read aloud and you ask your partner to turn and talk, how does your child do taking that apart? And then later, when they're in texts, right? So we're giving teachers frames to think about the ways to communicate data in a way that's parent-friendly, so that parents will have a great wide understanding.
Sure, sure.
And the same is with math, you know, it's not just the right answer. That's actually only a tiny slice of the pie.
Nicely done.
It's all full circle.
You stole that from me. I didn't even notice. Um, but it's also, how do they attack the problem? What do they do when they're faced with a challenge?
Right.
How do you communicate your strategy to other people and listen to the strategy they use? So when we talk to teachers, we shared what does the whole student look like?
Sure.
And especially just that, you know, the answer is only one piece, and really, the data comes down to the answers they got right, and not as much emphasis on the process that they took.
No, that all makes sense. You, you're just talking to a fellow data geek. I'm like, where are my kids?
Is there any suggestion, though, that we would consider adding it to the report cards? Because the report cards are very numerical. And, you know, in terms of, like, I can see how the parent-teacher conferences, you have that holistic conversation, and you can put a bit, but I just wonder, is there something to be said for kind of adding that information to the report cards? To, you know, as a way for parents to also kind of have a bit more understanding of what's going on and, you know, seeing that kind of numerical.
But actually, the report card is more detailed than you would even get from IREDDI, because the report card gives you, um, a breakdown even within a domain, all the different standards. So, um, that would be their actual performance on everything. So um, to give you an IREDDI number wouldn't, doesn't really tell you anything. But if you say they're proficient, or, you know, they're getting a three in, you know, comparison word problems, now that does tell you something. So. So I think maybe that the report card is actually more detailed than an I-ready number might be.
Yeah. A hurdle also is, these students took the test in January and then report cards are going to be in March or, you know, the end of March. It's just from the time that the assessment was completed until now, so much growth and change has happened. So it's hard to kind of reflect back. So the timing piece is also an obstacle. It's definitely something we are constantly thinking about. The, we now possess this knowledge, how is it communicated? How do we educate every stakeholder in knowing it? Cause just passing it out without the level of understanding is so tricky. But it's something we are constantly wondering.
Other questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So happy you could come tonight.
That was a stretch, yeah. When you make up new words to try to fit in the pun, it's nice.
That went from math joke to dad joke. That might have been. It was a boundary violation right there.
In the vendor.
Just stay, I just had to open to them.
We're gonna talk about tiered focus monitoring aboard with our student services director, Courtney Moran. Courtney, hi.
Hi.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome. Love to follow that crew.
Do you have math jokes for us?
We don't expect.
There will be, no. But it was great to hear them. And I did notice that they only called themselves K through five coordinators. They've been so great since putting the preschool into each one of our neighborhood schools. Nobody asked them to dip their toe into each classroom, but they were immediately drawn. And so it wasn't unusual for them to come to me and say, hey, how can we bring this down to the preschool level? So Jen Traverso has done a wonderful job with the Hagerty program with the preschool teachers. And she right now is leading them with several different professional developments. And it's been great. Julie approached me for some intervention for the preschool curriculum. We were able to purchase that this year. And last year, when we knew we were in an unusual situation and how would we move forward, some of our special education grants were used to purchase the Bridges Intervention Program as well as the next step assessment. Because I always say that special education is only as strong as our general education. And we knew we would have gaps and worried, would those gaps automatically mean a special education referral, which we don't want to over-identify when a student doesn't need to do that. So with that data, it's being used to only to inform that instruction for the classroom teacher, but also help us when we do get into a situation where a student is struggling to be able to really understand what those areas are and inform our school psychologists and special educators about which assessments they want to do. So it's great. And when Kerry had mentioned the vertical, you know, alignment between each of the curriculum coordinators in their area, I I've never had a conversation about ELA without Erin and Jen, or math without Julie and Kelly. And so it's great. It's powerful. They are a great team and Kerry's super lucky to have them on their team. But anyway. I think you have, might have a PowerPoint for me on.
Poor Chris. You're in the meetings.
Tiered focus.
Doing it all.
Maybe.
It's like we need to get you a clicker or something.
Yes.
More like Ted Talk.
If not, I guess.
Should be in the package.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, it is, you're right. I kept only looking at the, the document, the report itself. Thank you. Okay, coming up.
All right. Here we are. So I'm happy to be here tonight to talk about our tiered focus monitoring. Last year, our last review that we had with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, it was known as the Coordinated Program Review, the CPR. And our last year that we were monitors was 2016 and 17. So that report had been prepared in May of 2017. This cycle was typically like every five years that we would go through a CPR. And it was very exhaustive. It included special education, it included all the civil rights, it included ELL at that time. And the department decided to divide up and remove ELL. That became part of their own review process. And decided to focus it on a little bit more so that they don't come in and overwhelm the district every five years with, show me everything you've got. Because it was a very exhaustive, you know, for for months you were preparing for it and then they were in your school for over a week, going through files and and that type of thing. So they did change their format for reporting. So once we finished with our last CPR, which was during that school year, that next year, I was notified that there was gonna be a change and that we would be up again, which I almost could not believe. We just went through this, this must be some mistake, but no, no. I was told that each one of the districts is placed along that cycle that you can see up there. So each one of those blocks. And so we were placed on year four, which might be difficult to see, but that's kind of on the four o'clock or five o'clock if we look at this as a, as a clock. And that was in the year of 2018, 19. We were told to, that we would have to do a self-assessment as part of Group B, which we did, submitted in the May of 2019. And then our second year, which is really, I think, considered year five of this cycle, would have been the 2019, 20 school year. Our onsite visit was scheduled for April 13th, 2020. We all know what happened in March, 2020. And so all the work that had kind of led up to that was put on pause. So we have been paused at this six o'clock mark, this year five, for a couple of years. So this year, they again went back to the self-assessment that I completed and that was going back to 2019. As you can imagine, there were some documents that they wanted to have refreshed, our time on learning, one of them, our PD information, schedules, certifications. And so we worked with them to make sure that everything was updated and they were taking a look at that. And that's where we are right now. So following this year, we will go into year six. And then we will get back into a self-assessment period for year one, which would be focused on Group A universal standards. And then again, they're coming back into district on that 12 o'clock mark, which says year two on it. I know one of the questions were, how could we compare the CPR from the previous go-around to this? And you really can't. The standards are different that were measured. And with that CPR, a lot of it focused on the IEP development, the implementation, our record review. So they were literally in our district for a week, going through student files to make sure that we had all the paperwork that was demonstrated. And that activity will more closely align with the Group A work and those universal standards that they asked for. So again, it's a three-step review process. You can see the self-assessment years would be happening in year one and four for us. We were year four and paused at year four for a couple of years. The onsite monitoring and the reporting, which was just completed, we are in that year five. And then the continuous monitoring is year three and six. Next year, we're technically a year six before we jump back into it.
Can I ask what that continuous monitoring is? Is it different to the onsite monitoring? Sorry, just to clarify.
Yep, I'm gonna get to that piece of it, but that is in the event that you would need to do some improvements.
Okay.
Then that would be that continuous monitoring.
They're not necessarily coming out again and doing.
No.
Okay.
No, only if it was deemed appropriate, so.
Okay, thanks.
Within that onsite monitoring and report that we had for year five, like I said, there was the self-assessment and then they were two days onsite. One was actually a virtual and one was with us touring. They had two people from the Department of Elementary coming out and we did a whip around the district and they were in every single one of our buildings. Each of the principals and assistant principals helped lead a tour. They were particularly interested in seeing where all the special education classrooms were in relationship to the general education classrooms. They were also looking at if that particular school had a timeout space, that they wanted to view what that looked like. Most of them had very specific questions for the principals. So I was just kind of sitting back and letting the principals speak about their own practices. A lot of them were around the timeout spaces and how that's used and how it's reported and et cetera. That was the hot topic that the department is monitoring statewide. The following day, which was still considered their onsite day, was actually virtual interviews. And these interviews were with select staff members, parents who had requested an interview. Our CPAC chair, Eileen Tatro, was, participated in that as well as myself, Dr. Chu, Dr. Cleary. And again, they were really interested in our reach programs. They were also interested in any staff member who may have had students that were in timeout for whatever reason, they wanted to make sure that they understood. So when they're looking at these standards, they're taking a look at, do you have a policy? What is your practice? And then they want to speak to everybody who's actually implementing it. And that's the purpose for getting into the school, speaking to the principals, speaking to those staff members. So Group B universal standards address these areas of licensure and professional development. This area, some of them just looked at, are we all up to date with our licensure, with credentials for all of the special education teachers, the related personnel, OTPT speech, school adjustment counselors? They were particularly interested in them this year and their certification and how many we had. And also taking a look at the professional development that we have district-wide, what we did last year during the pandemic. And they're also take, took a look at, are we doing our annual training on confidentiality and civil rights, which we do have module annual training that we do each year for every staff member in in our, in our schools. The parent and student community engagement takes a list, take a look, and I'm just kind of going over these briefly because I think that some really wanted to know what was under each one of these. But I wanted to know, let you know that in the cover letter that you received to the report, you could click on Toolbox and it brings up all of those standards that they were. So if you want to look a little bit more deeply into those. But this community engagement and parent and student, student engagement takes a look at child find, how are we finding students eligible, especially as they're transitioning from early intervention to our preschool program? How do we outreach to doctors' offices and other private preschools? Taking a look at our CPAC, do we have bylaws? Sitting down with a CPAC representative, what types of menus of workshops do they offer our community? And looking at our outreach to the community as far as translations? Are we translating any of the documents into appropriate languages? Looking at the student handbook and taking a look closely at discipline and bullying, non-discrimination? Taking a look at students who unfortunately make the decision to drop out of high school prior to receiving a diploma? And what are the safeguards that we are doing to help them along in that decision and the information that we're passing along to them, as well as physical restraints? The facilities and classroom observation, they're really look, they really wanted to take a look at access and comparability of facilities. They didn't want to see us, you know, all crammed into one section of the school in an isolation from everybody else. And that was one compliment that I did receive from them, that they were so impressed with how much each of those special education classrooms were embedded along their grade level corridor. Or when you were taking a look at the middle school level, really part of that pod, that team pod was just powerful. And so they really did appreciate that. The time on learning takes a look at school calendars, schedules and early releases for the high school seniors, making sure that they're not getting out too early. They took a close look at this year's. And then equal access around in, are we doing our own self-assessment and curriculum review when we are vetting new curriculum options for the district? So when they take a look at this, they give you a rating scale and they are looking for, are you, is everything implemented? Is your implementation in process? Is it partially implemented or not implemented at all? And they are really, if if you do not have them implemented, that's when you would get into this continuous improvement and monitoring plan, which of course is an acronym for it because there's an acronym for everything with DESI and it's that C-I-M-P. And we we've done this before because in our last CPR, if you did review that one, we did have several areas in ELL, civil rights and special education that we were doing these corrective action forms. And it's just setting goals and then demonstrating to the department that we have met what we were supposed to turn around or provide further clarification in. So very happy to report that we have everything fully implemented, that we are in compliance and that we are not going to be part of needing to do the continuous improvement and monitoring plan. They also have a commendable rating for those areas that might stand out above and beyond if appropriate and, but we were going for implemented, we got it and I'm pretty happy with that. And that's about it. Do you have any questions?
Questions from the committee. Alicia has.
Courtney, do they ever review sort of the the balance between the school programs and the after-school programs and the accessibility of the after-school programs? Does DESI ever review that as part of their process?
Not as part of this process. If there was a concern, then it usually comes from a different angle of a complaint, but this is just during the school.
Okay.
Year.
Thank you.
Now, for summer school, which is after the school year, that will be explored more probably under the unit, the universal A standards.
Thank you.
Yes.
Courtney, I'm just, so this was a really interesting report to read for me because I I'm I'm used to the more, you know, five-year intensive programs and, you know, when you get the report or reviews. And kind of what struck me as I was reading through the report was how we kind of didn't get mess, kind of maybe some of them meat to the, the review in terms of maybe some feedback in terms of, you know, the parent surveys that were done or, you know, I know there was interviews done and, you know, I'm just curious as to, is this typical with this new kind of review or report or that we would have access or?
So I think that if anything would have come up in the survey or in the interviews, that would have pointed them in a different direction of needing more data to explore or if it was part of one of the standards, that you might see it. If if it wasn't an overwhelming piece or if it had nothing to do with what they were trying to assess.
Yeah.
I would have, and I don't know because I wasn't part of those conversations, I would assume that that member from the Department of Ed would have kind of pointed them in a different direction if they had something to further follow up on, but explained that it wasn't necessarily part of this process. So.
And and just one further question, because that's just the nature of me. How do we go to being commendable? I'm just curious is, because I mean, it's it's interesting to say, you know, we've implemented it, but it it kind of, you know, there's always room for improvement in every aspect of life. And I think it's really unusual to get a school report that says, you know, you've kind of ticked all the boxes, you know. It would be nice to see, well, what can we still continue to improve on and reflect on? You know, we ask that of our educators all the time and I think we should be asking that of ourselves. So I'm just curious as to kind of what's the difference or is that something we strive for?
I don't know what their rubric is.
Okay.
Certainly what we're always looking for is compliance with the regulations. And so I'm pretty pleased with that finding that we are in compliance. I would think that if they were overly impressed with one of the elements, then that might have come up.
Okay.
I've never been part of a review where we haven't had corrective actions because usually it's more, like, some, some of the things that we were ticked on last time were very minor. minor, but we needed to improve on it, so we did. And that was easy to kind of bring it up. But usually you do have something to improve on and.
And that's just it, actually Courtney and I, actually they spelled my last name incorrectly, so I didn't get it, but you had come over because we received an email and it was about this. And it said, you don't have any corrective actions or it was more formal than that. But there was something about the email address and they spelled my last name incorrectly that we said, this is weird.
And they sent it to my personal Gmail.
Oh, it was to your personal.
Rather than.
So we thought multiple red flags, so we didn't click on what they told us to click on, forwarded it to Mike. Well, sure enough, it was somebody phishing or what, but we shouldn't have clicked on it. It could have led us to, you know, a compromising situation. But one of the red flags was the fact that there were absolutely no findings. That's really unusual. Usually they find something. So when they ever came back weeks later, you had checked in, they said, no, we didn't send anything. So that was a scam. But then weeks later, we actually got the report and there were no findings and that was the real one. So.
Yay.
Yes.
But it's great, you know, because certainly we set the table for us to be in compliance with everything. And then although this was a lot of work for us to complete, it was equally amount of work for the building principals and for the teachers to really be able to demonstrate that what we're doing. The next cycle is a lot more exhaustive. It is definitely a lot more intense in terms of going through student records, which is what we're more used to doing. But it's a great tribute to the staff members who have worked hard over the years as well as the principals to make sure that we are in line with all of those practices. So I'm pretty pleased with that.
And it sets the table for an easy year six relative to this process. Because you're not doing that.
It's so funny to use the word easy after talking to Courtney. She's in charge of our director of Public Services. Because I actually don't think there's anything easy about.
That's why I said relative to this process. There's no, I mean, are there obligations to the process in year six? Or because we implemented, is the focus really on the year one of the other group?
I would say what our goal would be is never to drop the ball, right? And to continue to, as Catherine says, you know, continue to strive to do the very best that we can coming off of two years, knowing that we have this, I'm quite pleased.
But there are no products or deliverables?
There are no products that need to be given. Now, you know, we're constantly being monitored. We have all these other identifiers that we need to look at. And so that goes on all the time. And that's what places us in whatever tier we might be looked at. Right now, we're considered Tier Two, which we are in good company. We're between 70 and 80% of the districts in the Commonwealth are in that Tier Two. But it does take a look at our different indicators for early childhood, indicators around graduation. It also takes a look at the significant disproportionality, which is something that I've been quite transparent on over the past few years in regards to our specific learning disabilities category. So that one actually put us into Tier Two of that 70 to 80% rather than the Tier One.
So I would say that's a very important point because there's never not a time when DESI or the BSEA or someone else is not reviewing a lot of these processes. It just means that this, the TFM is not necessarily happening next year. There are constantly ongoing reviews for all of these things. And at any given time, something will pop up and need to be addressed, et cetera. So it's not, it's not, you're done, you're good for a year. It just means that this process was done for this year and all of the other monitoring that still goes on is still going on.
And so when we get to the next review as Universal Standard A, you're not going to be able to go back and compare it to B. It'll be completely different and there could very well be areas that we need to improve on. Yes, Valerie?
As usual, a conversation with you clears up so many of, so much of this because like the tiers, the groups, like the years, that was all very confusing for me to absorb from this document. And I just wanted to touch on the point that was like, I read this thinking, this is like an executive summary. Where's like, where's the rest of it, right? And not so much that I expected findings or something like that, but you're talking about all this work that you put in, right? And not that the state is here for these days and it's like, this is what we show for it, okay? That feels backwards. So I appreciate all the explanation and understanding.
So when you looked at that chart that said SE5 CR, and yeah, I mean, once we found out that we were fully in compliance, I was, I wanted the A plus, I wanted the, you know, I wanted the sticker on the top too. And it was eight pages, but I have come to like those eight pages because anything more than that would have been a lot more work for next year.
Sure, sure. Yep. Well, thank you for the explanation and.
You're welcome.
I had one more question because I did look at that chart and I saw that there was only one code that was not applicable, which then I went back to the list because I was like, what is the one thing that's not applicable? Can you explain, what does an educational interpreter mean in the terms of special education? Because it was the one thing that was not applicable and I was like, wait, what is this thing?
Sure. Hold on.
First, let's remember it's not applicable.
It's not applicable.
So it's okay that you're like, yes, I do know.
Totally get back to me on that.
It would have been applicable if we had a student in our district who required ASL Sign Language.
Okay.
And then they would have taken a look at their certification to make sure that they are part of the list. That was something that was viewed upon in our last, but not at this one.
Interesting. Fascinating. Thank you.
I'm impressed. I just remembered that.
Eight thirty-six on a Monday night.
Well, that was commendable.
Yes.
You got it.
Is that the A plus?
I do want to say, I think the fact that you did all this tremendous amount of work that was also then paused, work that then needed to be redone because the work was paused and doing all of that while still dealing with the day-to-day crises and problem solving, because there's this, yes, there are, you know, departments at DESI that are constantly reviewing. They are investigating and reviewing. They are constantly looking at the past. And you had to prepare all this and deal with today and think about tomorrow at the same time. So I just think it was, I think it was commendable that you, that you did get all that done.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Courtney. Okay. Next agenda item is an update on the Stony Brook and Miller principal searches.
So, so yeah, so we've conducted the first rounds of the principal searches. We are excited to say that the opportunity for parents to meet the candidates are coming up now. So tomorrow evening at?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, thank you. Okay, six o'clock. At six o'clock at Stony Brook, it'll be the opportunity for parents to meet Ms. Allison Hammer, who is a, currently an assistant principal in Wakefield. And that will be a 30-minute meeting. And at that time, people who are in attendance, we're going to have feedback forms that we're going to ask the people provide. That's going to be very important for me to get a sense as to their feelings about the two candidates. At seven, so we said six o'clock, at 6:45, I'm looking at the clock, right? So 6:45 to 7:15 will be the opportunity for parents to hear from the other finalist, who is Mr. Rick McElhenney, who is the current interim principal there and who's been the assistant principal there at Stony Brook for eight years before that. And so in the afternoon, the faculty from Stony Brook will be, have two different separate sessions of 30 minutes as well to hear. It's a meet and greet, so they're going to talk and they'll probably ask questions of the people in attendance and try to get some feedback and dialogue between the two groups, which I think is fantastic. And then the following week, on March 23rd, we are announcing this now for the first time. We haven't sent this out to families as of yet. But on March 23rd, which is Wednesday, at 6:30, so from 6:30 to 7, we're going to be inviting the Miller families to meet the finalist that the committee chose. And we're going to talk about the committees in just a minute. Carrie can kind of help with that process. And that's going to be the interim principal, Melissa Boylan. So from 6:30 to 7, will be an opportunity for parents to go, that will be in the library at Miller as a meet and greet. The faculty will have the same opportunity in the afternoon to meet with Melissa there as well. And there'll be the same forms that we'll be asking people to provide us with input on. And while I was saying that, the Stony Brook meet and greets will be taking place in the auditorium at Stony Brook. Did you want to talk about the process a little bit and give them, talk about what we did?
Sure, yes. So we had an advisory committee of nine or so people, staff, parents, school committee member, representative, administrators. And we came together and talked about what our vision is and what we're hoping to find in a candidate or set of candidates. So then we went through the interview process and it was just fascinating to hear the conversations and have the dialogue and not everybody always agreed and saw things through a different lens. And to just see your own thinking evolve as you hear the multiple perspectives is just incredibly, it's fascinating, but it also goes to show the value of that type of process and making sure to include the stakeholders. So when we went through the interviews, after we went through the interviews that lasted anywhere from 30 to 45 or so minutes, we deliberated and there was a lot of deliberation and it was nice at the end, the committee felt like there was a solid consensus as to who to send through. And the finalist candidates, all three of them in this sense, were thrilled to accept being a finalist and very much looking forward to the next step. And then after that, I think Chris will think about all of the information as well as the feedback that we received from the staff and the parents with these meet and greet sessions to ultimately make his selection.
Yep.
So that will be coming probably this week for the Stony Brook and next week for Miller.
And so the people had asked questions about the number of people who had applied. I know for the, for the Miller, for the Miller position, there were 11 people who had applied for the position and I believe there were nine who applied for Stony Brook. Both, both rounds included four interviews, four candidates who were selected to interview based on the qualifications. And yet both of the committees had the same number of people, so both committees had nine people on the committee.
Well, I think I speak for the school committee when I say thank you to you two and for everyone who served on those committees. I mean, that was a busy two weeks to get through all of that. That's a lot to squeeze in, so. And we have a little bit left here to go in the process, but you know, it sounds great. I think that, appreciate the update. And I guess I'd look to the committee to see if there's any questions from you folks So we're talking tomorrow at six.
Tomorrow, tomorrow there's two. One at six, from six to 6:30, and then from 6:45 to 7:15.
And then Wednesday, the 23rd.
Wednesday at 6:30, 6:30 to 7.
Okay. Great. And we'll look forward to those. That will move to the new amended job description for the assistant superintendent of director, sorry, assistant superintendent separately and director of equity for curriculum and instruction. It's a really new job description, as discussed previously, but now we have the job descriptions in our packet and an opportunity to look at those and talk about those. Do you want to preface it with any remarks or are we?
No, I mean, we talked about them, we talked about it when we were going through the budget process. I will say what we, you know, what we looked at was looking to see, looking at the, looking first at the current job description for the assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction and looking at the different expectations that exist and the job functions and responsibilities that exist there and the different things that we were talking about that Carrie would continue to have as the assistant superintendent, plus then taking the expectations of the leadership of the HR department and what would that look like, bringing that into the first job description and then developing what a director of equity, curriculum and instruction would look like. And so that's where these came from. And we took multiple different models to sort of make sure that we thought that we were covering all the bases and we present them to you for discussion.
And then you would be looking for a vote of?
Yeah, the vote on the, vote on approval for the job descriptions for the next meeting. We did post an anticipated opening for the director of equity, curriculum and instruction, that if you approve of the job description, then we can move forward with bringing people in for interviews.
And that was posted today.
This morning.
Okay. Did you have a question?
Well, I had a comment, a question, the question was the timeline, which you just answered. The comment, I guess, was twofold. Reading the job description for the assistant superintendent, I was tired just reading it.
Yeah.
So, like, wow. Thank you. And on the job description for the director of equity, curriculum and instruction, I appreciate how the concepts of equity are really being infused into that position. And I know that, that focus has always been there, but infusing it into that job description, I think, is a powerful thing. So thank you.
What's the acronym going to be for that person's position? Because that's a mouthful.
It is.
It'll turn out to be.
Yeah. We could, we could go with DESI, right? Just to be, just to be our approved, but no.
I just wanted to comment that I do, I appreciate that the Title IX coordination will stay with the assistant superintendent. That was one of my floating questions when we started talking about changing your job description. There was like, what happens to those new Title IX guidelines that just came through? So I appreciated seeing that there as well.
And I think to that point, I mean, that's one of the things that we do have, we have been addressing very specific things, like the new regulations with Title IX, right? And that is, it kind of goes back to a little bit what Gloria was saying, is that the focus here is to bring, to identify and look for someone who has an equity lens and clearly bringing an equity lens to curriculum and instruction. The expectation is not that this person is the district-wide director of equity.
Right.
That is not the, that is not the expectation. It's by specifically saying that we think that it is paramount that our curriculum and instruction be led with an equity lens.
Would you look for that person to have some sort of qualification? I don't, and I don't know what kind of qualifications you can kind of have in that area. And I'm just curious as to what that might look like for you with the candidate in front of you.
Well, I do think, first of all, it's about their experience with doing work similar to this in the first place, right? There isn't going to be a specific qualification for director of equity and curriculum and instruction, right? Because I think to your point. But the idea of finding somebody who has, who already has exhibited a passion for and a commitment to, I think, equity leadership and has incredibly strong curriculum and instruction knowledge background, because that's, I know that was a concern that I know many of you have even mentioned and it's something that we've talked about. Honestly, Carrie has done a tremendous job, right? I mean, she works with the four people who sat before you tonight, who did an amazing job with the presentation. The curriculum work in our, in our district is top-notch and I would, I would compare it to any, anywhere and think that ours is stronger. So we want to make sure that we find somebody who is able to truly, I think, continue that great work and bring, bring new, you know, bring, bring new, bring new lens and bring new eyes to the work and to, I think, champion that in a different way. So it is a major concern because we also don't, we want to make sure that, that we don't undermine, I think, the strength of our curriculum and instruction without, by not having the right candidates.
I had a question about the assistant superintendent job description. Is there any, I don't, and again, I don't know what this is, but like if I was looking at a comparative HR director or HR coordinator, is there like a relevant certification or qualification or something that should be in there?
There's not, right? Because when you talk to other districts that have already historically had. Because when you talk to other districts that have already historically had an assistant superintendent of HR, it's, it's normally, is this person, it's about their ability, it's about their, it's about the, the quality of their leadership and their knowledge of, I think, yes, the, the laws and/or their capacity for growth in the learning curve. It, it's something that, that we've asked that question, right? But there isn't necessarily like, for example, you know, there isn't a, um, a doctorate in educational HR, right? There, there are course, there's coursework, there's, there's professional development, but not necessarily a specific degree in the education realm that would be similar to that.
And is it, it's kind of typical, or is it often typical that the assistant superintendent would have the HR function?
You, you, we see that as a model in many districts. I feel like you will see an assistant superintendent of finance, which is something that Westford had at one time, right? Sometimes that will take place. You will see an assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction, the way that we have had it. You, you will see some places that have an assistant superintendent of HR. And then there are places that have directors and they don't have a specific title with it. Or you'll find places that have multiple assistant superintendents, each one in a different, um, area.
Could I ask one last question? I'm just curious and it's me just throwing this out there. You know, it's a conversation I hear that kind of often pops up in terms of the town side in, you know, should we be considering sharing the HR, you know, function with the town as a, you know, being fiscally efficient maybe with our, our budgeting? So I'm just curious, cause I still hear that sometimes thrown out and I kind of often would, I would be kind of curious as to what is the thinking on that?
So it, it is something that, that we've talked about. It's something that was asked of me right when I became the superintendent. And I will say, um, one of the things that Pat and I have talked about as well too, the business office interacts with our HR department throughout the day on a regular basis. And considering the fact that we have a thousand employees and we're the largest employer in, 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 in town in terms of the, in terms of the town employees, I would be very, I, I would be very nervous about not having the HR department in our central office and able to, I think, collaborate with the business office. And I would say daily, but it's literally throughout the day. It's, it's, um, so that would be my concern, yeah.
Is it worth having that conversation with the town one way or the other to kind of just, you know?
Well, we did, we, we, we initially had that conversation when I first met with the town manager. There might be functions, like right now, the, the town oversees the benefits, right? So I feel like there's, there could be, there could be functions that could, that could certainly maybe even be adapted and, and we could certainly look to efficiencies. We have more employees and a smaller department at the school right now. And so I would be, I, I just would be concerned about, about us outsourcing the, and, and I would say the school needs in HR can be very, very, very specific in different ways too. So I would be curious about talking about, maybe there's ways to look at the, the, the work that's being done in the future and, and looking at sharing resources in different ways, but I, I would be hesitant to, to just talk about totally combining the two.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not suggesting it, I think it's more kind of, could we draw a line under it? Or maybe as, in terms of a conversation or a topic that often pops up, you know? Put a line under it, one way or the other.
Well, I think you said, I mean, we, we already are pretty efficient when you look at the size of the department and the number of employees. And we're already getting some of that efficiency with benefits. And it makes sense, I mean, we're keeping the things that are sort of education domain, specific HR functions that, that require that specialized knowledge and that close coordination with the finance office, you know, over here. But who knows, maybe there, I mean, maybe there are other things that.
Right, and I do think that it's, it, you know, in, in this process, we're going to be looking to see, again, how can we do things better? You know what I mean? How can we continue to grow? And, and so it, I, it'll be interesting to see as, as we collaborate, what the needs are.
I was just going to voice complete support for that. I mean, I, I think, I would have concerns about combining those departments in terms of capacity and coordination that, I mean, just every month, looking at our personnel update, the number of changes and shuffling that happens, I, I don't think most people realize the degree of in and out and back, family leaves and, and things that have to be managed to really, you know, keep the lights on and the trains running. And, and I think that's, that's got to be a house.
Right, right.
The pie's running?
I just said, we have trains? More buses, we're just going to do trains? The train concept.
I didn't have a, I didn't have a circle metaphor passed.
The pie is baked now.
The wheels in motion.
Any other comments or questions on the, the job descriptions?
Just quickly, we expect to vote on those at the next meeting? Okay.
Thanks for those. The FY twenty-three school calendar.
Okay.
Here it is.
So.
Hot off the presses.
It is hot off the presses. It is hot off the presses. So what, what I'd like to share with you is, is the calendar committee met and had a number of conversations about this. I also brought this to the DEI team and even in between multiple meetings, things have changed. So even what I was initially anticipating this afternoon, after having our, our follow-up calendar committee meeting, we had additional conversations. And so I'm going to kind of share that all with you right now because this is the proposed calendar that I'm bringing to you. I anticipate you having questions, I anticipate you getting feedback before you ever making a decision on this. But, um, a couple of things to start with and, uh, first thing that you, you, you might notice is that in August, we are looking to have two professional development days at the beginning of the school year, which is different than what we have done. Now, the reason for this is specific because we are rolling out the new student information system. So we want to have those, those two, instead of just one day, we want to have two days specifically so that all of our teachers can, can, we can be making sure that we're supporting everybody as we roll out Power School, okay? So that was the reason why that would be there specifically for next year. Now, at the same time, September sixth is the state primary, okay? So, so we don't have school that day. We also typically have always had that Friday off before Labor Day. So we already talked about all of this contractually with, um, with, with, well, with all of our contracts, right? We shared it with WEA and such that, that it's still going to be the same length of a weekend there as we start the year, but instead of having that Friday off because we have to have the Tuesday off, we've moved that around so we'll, and, and end up having three days of school because we're having that professional development day on the thirtieth. So did that make sense to everybody that, following that? Okay, so then, um, we do have three elections next year, right? So there's the state primary on September sixth, there is the, the state election on November eighth, and then there's the town election on May second. So all of those days are currently marked as no school days. Even though they have consolidated the polling to WA, they're still also using Stony Brook and what I had expressed earlier was my concern about having some schools in session and other schools not in session. So one of the things that we looked at and we talked a great deal about was whether or not we would, whether, whether or not we would be able to have a no school day for Diwali as, as an observance of Diwali. And we looked at where, where Diwali is, um, it's, it's a five-day festival, but where it's, where it's being observed is on October twenty-fourth. In talking with a number of people, there were questions as to if there was a day that was to be observed, which day would it be? And many people talked about the third day of Diwali, but then there was actually inconsistency as to when Diwali was starting. So I actually went and looked at when government offices were recognized to be closed in India specifically, and they had acknowledged October twenty-fourth as the day of observance, as a, as a bank holiday, if you will. They didn't use the term bank holiday, but the idea of the offices, um, government offices being closed. What we talked about was our concern about bringing, we, we went back and forth as to whether we should be recognizing federal and state holidays or whether we should be recognizing local holidays and, and traditions that are, that are, that are taking place within our community as well too. And as we looked at the impact that it was having on the school year, it, if we were to take the day off completely for Diwali, we would then also want to be looking at other opportunities where we could be looking at to support families and students who are, who are, who are celebrating other things as well too. We talked about Lunar New Year. Lunar New Year, next year is on a Sunday, so it wasn't impacting a school day. We talked about Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. We talked about the, what this would look like on the schedule with our conference days and the election days next year. And it would put us, if we were to increase the number of days off, it would put, right now you can see that our last day of school is, is June twentieth as a half day, which is the day after Juneteenth, because Juneteenth is a state holiday, so there'll be no school on Monday, Juneteenth. That's what we're looking at right now too, within our district currently. Is that it's, our last day of school is a half day on the twenty-first, not to confuse anybody if they're listening right now, um, on the twenty-first, because Monday is a state holiday because Juneteenth is on a Sunday this year. Right? Now, we do know that we typically have snow days. However, I don't necessarily want to just assume that as we look at the, at the calendar. But if we were to include any other holidays, that would be putting our snow days, potential five-day snow days to the twenty-eighth, even the twenty-ninth, or even the thirtieth, which is concerning. The other issue that we would, that I would want you to be aware of to consider is that traditionally, and again, it doesn't mean that we can't change these things, but traditionally, the, uh, the WA graduation has been the first Friday in June. If we move the school calendar at all at this point, graduation would be on the ninth. Because graduation has to be within twelve days of the last scheduled day of school. And so June second is still, it is the twelfth day with this current proposed calendar. So in doing that, what the committee wants to propose, and we can get, we can do some more research and, and give you more information as well too though, was to look and see if we were to make October twenty-fourth a half day, would that be, would that be in a, uh, I think in a appropriate way for us as a district to be acknowledging and supporting all of our students and families who celebrate Diwali? We're talking about outside of the calendar committee, even in the calendar committee, we talked about it, but it's outside of their purview, was really making sure that we're articulating more clearly what all of the expectations we have around work expectations in terms of things that are assigned and activities that are taking place in, in all of the different holidays, because we have identified them for a very specific reason. So we want to make sure that the, that the, that the policies that, that we've put in place previously are being carried out. And we also talked about having the DEI team come up with maybe some more clear guidelines that can be universal for multiple cultural events and holidays for our faculty to be thinking about. So that's a great deal of the thought process that went into this proposal that you see before you. Carrie, can you think of anything that I missed in terms of the development of this or even anything that I should be highlighting that is a change? I mean, I, I think those are the only things that are different than what we might have, I mean, changes in terms of the holidays like Veterans Day that moves anyway. You know, like it's always the eleventh, but it's a different day of the week. Things like that are similar. This, this calendar reflects the previous attempt at our scheduling of the, um, curriculum nights. Because if you remember, last year, we, we started ten days later because we had a hundred and seventy school day because of the start of the school year, we had the ten days that the state gave us. And so all of our curriculum nights were adjusted. And then this year, when we kind of rolled over the calendar, they were, we followed last year's timeline instead of going back to the previous timeline. This is reflective of that previous timeline. There's, that, there's a lot, I've said a lot.
What I took away from it was that it was really easy. Basically built itself.
It basically.
I'm trying to pick, I'm literally, as you're talking, trying to picture like what you were doing in real time. Like, did you have a giant calendar, you know, with magnetic things?
That would have been fun. Would you have giant calendars? I will say, Sandra Bravo, who is Carrie's administrative assistant, did a phenomenal job and Carrie worked with her as well too, just even counting the days to make sure. That, that, that is always a, kind of a really headache of this. And, and they, they, they looked at it to make sure, and then we had a fancy version that had all the, the days in the, in the borders that you don't need to see because it just clutters it up and makes it confusing, but Catherine saw that version, so she remembers that.
Easy as pie, Chris.
Right, right. There you go.
She was first. She was first.
She goes, Valerie.
I was, can you remind me that half-days still count?
Yes, they do.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so half-days still count as a full, as a day, as a full day school. Half-days count as a school day.
Okay.
The next thing that we have to do is what Courtney talked about, which is make sure that we meet all of our time on learning. So we can't have too many half-days or then we compromise our ability to meet that.
I had a question about October. If we do decide to observe Diwali with an early release, is there flexibility to that October nineteenth professional development? Cause those seem kind of close to have a Wednesday professional development half-day and then the Monday half-day.
Yes.
Yes, we could do that. Yeah, thank you.
That could move.
That is flexible, yeah.
Could you do the professional development in the morning and give everyone off the twenty-fourth?
The, it only, the school days only count for the students. So, so that we would still, that would still kick us an extra day.
Add to the end of the year.
If we were to do that.
The other, and sorry, just to fall off that, um, when you guys pick the early release professional development days, do you, do you jump around to different days of the week on purpose?
We do, thinking that that would be more convenient because if a Thursday's difficult for somebody. And I guess it, it could go the other way, but yes, we do do that.
Okay. I think that's my questions for the moment.
I'm just curious on that professional development, you know, um, for working families. I often wonder, is it easier, you know, if it's on a Friday or something, you know what I mean? Friday afternoon maybe is, is kind of the one typically quite, or maybe afternoon or, as opposed to a Tuesday afternoon or a Thursday?
I'd just be concerned about staff attentiveness and attendance. If we're teaching something new on a Friday afternoon, I just worry about the captivated audience.
I was only asking from a consistency point of view to know like, oh, the second Wednesday of every month is something, but I understand the lot, reason.
And we only have four of, four of the half-day PD days.
Yep.
We certainly could be more consistent. Our, our thought was for the convenience of families to spread it out. From a school point of view, we could do Wednesdays every time. If, if the committee feels as though that's best for families. Take a look at that.
So that would be interesting from the perspective of there are many districts who do do that, but then they work with their community partners. So like, if you live in Acton, you know that every, what is it, like every third, Thursday or so? So there's some sort of pattern in Acton.
Wednesday half-day.
Every Wednesday half-day. And the community partners have stepped up to provide programming and things. So if that's something that we look at, we should definitely be discussing with our community partners. To start with, I'm very grateful that we're taking so many more things into account and I think it's very interesting that this is not necessarily going to be a one-off. This fixes our calendar forever because there are things that move and yes, like there's an Edelphateer and there's, um, I think you said it was Passover that are taken care of by vacations and weekend, oh no, Lunar New Year, excuse me. But then Passover is not necessarily, because everything moves, so it is an ongoing conversation. The policy subcommittee has been looking at what is called our religious observance policy and we would like to, what we've been working on is moving it more broadly to be a religious and cultural observance policy because some of these holidays for our families are not based around a religion, they are cultural observances. And I would suggest that as part of that discussion about how you push out, how students can make up work, or how they request work, how staff treats things, that perhaps a regulation should follow that. So that policy is nowhere near being ready to go, and I think we need to have more conversations about it based on the calendar, et cetera, but there's room for regulation to come after it that would be, you know, maybe fed through the DEI, so that that can inform things like this calendar, and like you talked about the supporting document that would go with it. I just wanted to flag that we are constantly, we have been over the last, sorry, not constantly, consistently, we have been consistently over the last few months sort of taking bites out of that and sharing it with the DI and back and forth, so that is an ongoing conversation that's also being had.
Great.
Becca?
I know this isn't like really our place to speak, but I just had a thought. For Columbus Day, I don't know whether, maybe it's not on there because of like the federal and state observed holidays, but I was wondering if it would be worthwhile and possible to like add Indigenous Peoples' Day, because I know there is a lot of people that feel strongly about Columbus Day particularly, and I think maybe it'd be help, it'd help to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day at the same time possibly.
It, it's also a conversation that's taking place within the community as well, too, right, in the town of Westford specifically, so I, I think, I think we, we definitely would be looking at, I think I want to see if we can be partners with the town to kind of support that.
Thanks for bringing it up, and it is your place to comment on it.
Yes. It absolutely is.
Hannah?
Um.
But it's not Hannah's place, so.
I would just have to say I'm very uncomfortable with this calendar. I love the progress celebrating Diwali. I think that's exactly the kind of change that we need, because that was a student concern, and it really shows that the town is listening to the students and acknowledging their concerns, and this is a sign of respect to their cultures and religion. But when I look at this calendar, I see Diwali and Good Friday. Christmas and Kwanzaa both fall on the winter vacation, and I see nothing for the Jewish community, and as a Jewish student, I think a lot of times the Jewish community is left out of discussion, even in DEI discussions. A lot of the time it's not really acknowledged, and antisemitism is a real issue in Westford. I've personally experienced it on many an occasion, so. I just think that it would be nice if the town could try and incorporate the Jewish community and discussion on antisemitism into their DEI work, too. And I think with the days off of school, I mean, I haven't been able to go to religious services for Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah, thank you, probably since seventh grade, just because I've had way too much work in school on those days. Tests regardless of how many letters the principals send out about not giving tests, and I don't know, I just think it would be a good step for the community if we could extend the same respect to the Jewish community that we do to other religious communities. Like shaking, sorry.
No, thank you.
Top subject.
Thank you, thank you Hannah, because that, that is, that is a conversation that we were having today specifically as well, too, and we have been talking about the, the importance of everything that you just said, even within the DEI team as well, too. So it is, it, it, it's not, I mean, it's not something that we're not thinking about, and, and we want to figure out what we can do to do that, because that's kind of what I was talking about. If we were to look at Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, the, the, the challenge that we talked about was specifically the, 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 the very nature of those holy days being days of no work, and there was no way for us to, at this moment in time, to not have a school day, and so, but we're still looking at that, and, and but I, I appreciate everything you just said. You said it very well.
I, yeah, I guess to me, it just feels like these religious observances and cultural observances should be more of a priority than extending the school year into the summer. I just think it's a sacrifice that's worth it for the communities. And in the history of Westford, we did have days off of school for Jewish holidays, and that was something that was changed, which I'm not really quite sure why, but I think just continuing that conversation would be good.
One of the things that I mentioned when I was talking to everybody a little bit that we did talk about today is I think we should have a very real conversation about our conferences. We have no school days.
Yep.
When the, when the parent conferences take place, and that's actually, I would much rather see us exploring days off where students could be participating in different celebrations than having a day off for parent conferences, if we could rethink the way we do parent conferences, right, and look at that, because I think you could do both things. And, and not necessarily, we, we can't go past June thirtieth, right, so that's actually, we can't, we just can't extend the school year by past June thirtieth, but we could be looking at structurally, what else can we do? The challenge with that is that things like the conferences are a part of a lot of different aspects and contracts and different things. So those are, those are larger conversations that we have to take, that have to take place outside of just establishing which days are here, but, but, but we are gonna have those conversations.
And I'd love to be a part of that, if I can. I know the Jewish Student Union would probably like to be involved in that, too.
Fantastic.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you both. I cannot tell you how much you have added to our discussions this year, and I appreciate you both so very much. Thank you. I like being here.
And it is always your place.
Always.
Other comments or questions on the calendar?
Will this be, I, I saw that the agenda for the DEI meeting this week was updated, but I didn't actually see what was on it yet, I just saw that it got an update. Will this be on the agenda for the DEI on Thursday? Fantastic.
I updated the agenda before this afternoon's meeting, so I didn't, it's not on the agenda currently, but yes, it's gonna be.
I didn't look at it.
What are you thinking of timing, with, like, with, and process, when this goes to DEI and then the calendar committees? Do you want to come back here and collect some thoughts and comments another time, and then reconvene calendar committee? Were you thinking?
So I, I don't think the calendar committee should be reconvened again.
Okay.
I think I'd be happy to bring this and get, this has already been discussed at the DEI team, but I'll bring it back to the DI team. I sort of am proposing it to you, and then if, if we have discussions about it, it's kind of, I think it's in, you know, bringing it to you as a committee. If you want more information, I'd be, if you give me directive to do those things, I would be happy to do it, but my thoughts were not more conversations were gonna take place specifically about this.
But if we're voting on this, so I'm, I'm very curious, I would agree with Hannah, would we need to get some more information if we are going to do something for our Jewish community before we vote on it?
Well, I mean, I will say, if you want to do that for, for next year, it's extending the school year. So if the committee wants to do that and extend the school year, then that's, I think that might be something that that might be things that you could ask and get feedback on, but there is no room internally to change, like, the conference days, we can't do that for next year. We can't change the election days next year.
If we did a half day, A, I don't know if that, you know, is something that would be welcome, and, but if we do a half day, it doesn't impact the end of year date, but would it impact our learning time?
Well, but a half, a half, a half day of school for Rosh Hashanah or Yom Kippur defeats the purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's, the, the holiday is from sunset.
Yeah, I, I don't know enough for which, which would be.
Which is the reason why we didn't.
More important.
Which is the reason why we didn't. I would say to that end, if there were, if, if there were things like that, that, that we felt that we got feedback saying that that would be helpful, that would, I, I just, I wouldn't be aware of that, so that'd be a good question.
Hannah, would you mind speaking to that? Like how a half day, how would that feel for students?
Well, I think if it were going to be on a specific holiday, Yom Kippur is definitely the best holiday to have off, because it's the most serious event. It is sundown to sundown.
Right.
But I think the main problem for me was just that I couldn't make it to the services, so you're not supposed to work, but I think if I could make it to the services, and if my fellow students could, then half day is at least acknowledging our community and extending that same respect to us, and acknowledging that our religion is important, too, so. I don't think it necessarily has to be a full day. I think that would be ideal, but I understand it's really hard to make these schedules, so I think a half day would work if I can make it to the services during the day.
Is there a typical time, Hannah, at those services? And the reason I ask it again is because Good Friday, it's typically three o'clock.
It depends on the temple. I go to Temple Isaiah, which is in Lexington. They typically have services all day, and then all night. It just depends on which service you want to go to, because some of them are geared more towards young kids, and then they have more serious ones that are mostly adults. But the younger family services are usually in the mornings, so the afternoons are pretty much the bulk of the day, is like you're in temple the entire day, and then there are nighttime services which are shorter, it's usually the ones that I go to, because I can't go during the school day.
So I don't know whether maybe it's like in your, like jurisdiction to do this, but I thought, you know, if you guys didn't have any leeway and you had to maybe at best you could allot a half day slot, or a half day early release. I was wondering if it would be possible for you guys to mandate that there would be either maybe no homework or no quizzes for that day and the next day, so that they're not spending that night studying. At least that would relieve the pressure of studying that night. And I don't know whether that's possible for you guys to do, but.
It is, and that's one of the things we talked about, right, so that specifically was something that we talked about, even within the calendar committee. There were members of the, of building administration that were there, so that would really, it's not in the calendar committee's purview for them to, to say that.
Okay.
But we were, when we were looking at the challenges that we were facing and trying to move so many different pieces, one of the things we kept talking about was, okay, if there's some way that we can really make sure that, you know, there was, there was a, you know, a span of time where there was no outside work expected of anyone.
I think that would be like a good compromise, at least, you know, with our certain limitations.
So when we talk policy versus regulation, policy says accommodate the student, regulation says this is how you accommodate the student. So when we have these conversations, the school committee could draft the policy that says we will do the, we will be accommodating. We direct you to accommodate, and then Carrie and Chris would go through and figure out what that means on the ground, in classrooms, and communicate it out to the assistant, to the principals and the assistant principals, who would then communicate it out to their staff. So sort of like when we did the homework regulation, and we had not a lot of detail, just sort of like the, the overview, and then Carrie's regulation got down into the nitty gritty of like the numbers and the time and things like that. That's how those two things work together.
Feel like you're hearing enough here to warrant, like, further investigation into some of these issues? Do you need to hear anything from the committee? I'm just wondering if, 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 is there gonna be a vote next time, or do you feel like you need some time, or do you need more conversation, or do you want us to go, you know, invite more feedback from the community that we, that we bring next time, maybe to have a comment next time as well?
All right, if you're comfortable also extending when the vote is, I mean, in terms of, I know we're trying to kind of move this just for planning sake for the future, then I have no timeline in mind, so I think we could, we could have a discussion next time, and then collect more feedback and not assume a vote at the next meeting.
Does that feel okay?
That would put the vote in April eleventh. If you, if you had a discussion on the twenty eighth, you would put the vote on the calendar at April eleventh. Does that feel okay for everyone? I know people like it as soon as possible, but does April eleventh feel okay for everyone?
I mean, are there, are there things I'm not thinking of, other than vacation planning, that people are waiting?
The thing is, the draft at least is out there.
Right.
So people at least have a sense.
Of when things start and stop.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it.
Start, yeah, the start isn't gonna change.
The start date is, the start date is normally.
Is normally the big one, yeah.
Okay, if that's okay, I think that, I think that sounds good that we, that we have two more agendas, two more meetings with this on the agenda, with the vote on the second.
Okay.
Okay.
On the eleven, April. Think that was a good conversation, and, and again, good job, calendar committee, good job getting everything in there. It's, 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 uh, it's quite a feat.
Where, where did we leave the naming of the October holiday?
Oh, good.
Off. Did you?
Are we getting direction from town on that?
Well, the DE, town DEI already voted. They're doing a survey, but they, they took a vote as a group.
And, and to be fair, Indigenous Peoples' Day is a celebrated observance.
It's recognized in Massachusetts.
You know, we don't need anybody to, to approve it.
I, no, I was only, he's the town.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just arguing that we don't, it's not like it has to be an official town.
So how does, how does that, I'm just curious, interact with the, the town meeting vote from the year before last? Yeah, that's right. Where they did not.
Again, I think because it's a, it's an existing observance, the school, I mean, this is my take, the schools could, could recognize that on calendars, like we recognize other observances that aren't official, you know, officially necessarily town holidays or state holidays. It's just a, it's a nod to people who, for whom that day has a different significance. That, that would be my take. I don't, I don't think it has to be an official town or state holiday for us to acknowledge it on our calendar.
The school does like do some stuff for, usually you'll see it in the hallways or the board where they post about. So I was just thinking, if we're gonna mark it on the calendar, and as a town, we want to progress towards, you know, being more considerate, I thought that might be helpful.
I would not be surprised to see it come back on the warrant this year.
Right.
Given the town DEI stance, so.
Was that vote to actually change it from Columbus Day?
Yes.
So.
Which is different.
Which is different. So I'm assuming you could recognize the vote.
Right.
Yeah, we can add it.
Yeah.
And if it helps to have the committee vote on it, so that, you know, separate from the town DEI, you know, but that we sanction it for the, the calendar, I'm sure that's something we can do as well at a future meeting.
Happy to take that.
But, so think about, we can talk about that, think about if that's, if that's helpful.
Yep.
Thanks for coming back around to.
Yep, sorry.
Okay, I think that's, it sounds like that's the rest of the conversation on the calendar. Which brings us to the restorative process of. I'll start by saying we had our first restorative community circles last Thursday. They were virtual, Pathways to Restorative Communities facilitated those, and we had between twenty and thirty community members participating in those, and there was a waiting list, so we have more people who want to do that. And so I sat in one, I know Alicia Gloria Sean sat in circles. I'm sort of kind of curious to hear what you think, but I, from my perspective, it went really well, it was a chance for people to talk about recent incidents, tell how they felt it impacted them or the community, talk about what sorts of restorative steps they'd like to see take place in response to that. And so I just, I was really thankful for everybody who came out for those and participated, and I know we already started talking about scheduling another one, so that people who didn't get a chance can, can sit into those, and so that would probably, we talked about Thursday, March twenty fourth, potentially as a date, and so that's a tentative date for people. We'll see if, I'm not sure if everyone, if that works for everyone, we're still working to that, but. And I guess since the last meeting, the week before those circles, we had the webinar just explaining what a restorative justice process looks like, and we had, I think, almost a hundred and fifty people who sat in and watched that webinar, and that's available on YouTube, thanks to Westford Cat as well. Thoughts? I mean, did Alicia Gloria Sean, I don't know if you had any comments on?
Sure. It, for all the DEI work I've done over the years, that was actually the first time I sat in on a restorative justice circle, and there were a lot of themes that were similar to other groups that I've worked with. A lot of what's learned here leaves here, what's said here stays here. A lot of, um, what's learned here leaves here, what's said here stays here. So I can share that from my group, um, communication was something that I heard come up over and over again, that as much as there has been communication, there's always a hunger for more communication. And I think people are trying to understand not just what happened, but where we go from here. I do have to say, I, we ended on a very hopeful note because there were so many of us that did participate, that though we are still, you know, feeling the ramifications of what happened, it feels like most people are hopeful that we are taking more steps than we have ever taken before, that there are more people that are engaged than ever before. And I thought it was a phenomenal process and I would encourage anyone who has not participated in one to participate in the next one.
And, and thanks for bringing up some of the, the themes that you were hearing. For those who participated and for those who didn't, the last question was about what sorts of things can we do as a school district or as a community to, to keep addressing these things? Either the specific incident from January or generally. And because we were trying to finish in an hour, those were entered into the chat and sort of everybody kind of typed them in and then sent them at once so people weren't distracted by reading other people. So, um, and those are being collected. So those will be sent to the school committee and to administration. So we do have this feedback from, you know, close to 30 people on what they took away from us. I think that'll be, I've just seen the ones from, from our circle and I thought they were, they were fantastic and I'm sure the others are as well. Thanks. John?
Yeah, I think it was a good thought provoking, uh, kind of experience. I think the, the theme that, um, without getting into details of discussions, but a theme that I heard over and over again was, um, Alicia touched on it, was communication and some frustration with that. So I think that that's, eh, eh, we've talked about this as a board, as the, you know, things that we could have done differently or things that we'll do, um, in the future. So I think that's certainly something that we should spend some time focusing on. And we've talked about that and ways that we can communicate outside of the WPS system, right? Because we have all these great channels that we can alert school age parents and things like that, but there's, you know, some things outside of there that we could have taken advantage of and, um, that we can continue to look at. So overall, I thought it was a great experience.
Absolutely agreed. Great experience. I'd agree with, you know, both of the previous comments and, and yeah, would, would add an additional comment that I think there were a number of people involved in the circle that I participated in who no longer have students in, um, in, in the schools, but felt really impacted by this as community members and, um, still, and had kind of strong views on, um, wanting to, to make, um, our schools a safe place for everyone and that that was important to the broader community beyond, um, um, the direct school community. I don't know if I'm saying this well, but, um, but it was, it was really heartening to see how that broader community still very, very much cares about what's happening in our schools. And had, had a, had a lot of strong feelings.
So we look forward to doing more.
On the 24th, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Um, I'm looking, uh, the Middlesex, uh, Middlesex County District Attorney's Office is still working with both, um, me and Superintendent Eazy from Wayland and the MIAA to try to facilitate, um, maybe a, a larger panel discussion about, uh, sportsmanship because that's kind of a concern that's impacting a number of communities. And so it's something that they're talking about trying to, uh, bring together, which I think will be great. And we're continuing to work with the students at the academy to, to continue to have different types of circles that are, I think, helping to increase an understanding of the impact still in some, in some cases. Yep.
Other thoughts? Okay, more to come. As always, COVID update.
So, um, in talking with, in my own observations, just not, I, I don't spend as much time in the schools clearly as, as I would like to, but, um, in talking with the leadership team on Friday, we talked about some of the things that, that, uh, both, both of our student reps have mentioned about the, I think the changes in the being mask optional and the impact that, that we've seen in the schools. And I, all of the principals talked about sort of a, a gradual change over the course of, of time. I think there's still a higher percentage understandably within some of our younger, um, schools with, between staff members and students, um, whether they're choosing to not wear a mask or whether they're choosing to wear a mask. And I think, as I was told, like at the academy, I think, I think there's a, a, a much larger percentage of students who've, who've opted to not wear masks. There are still staff members and students who are wearing masks and at the middle schools, it's, it's kind of in, in the middle there, right? But I think also just the idea that one of the things that, that they shared was just seeing sort of the, just even the natural, um, the natural progression of, of the options of, of, of students who are kind of to the story that you had shared Magna too, like where students who, who have a mask who are then choosing whether they're going to wear one right now. Or whether they're, um, you know, whether they're not going to wear one at this moment in time too. But, you know, in terms of our testing protocols, I did have a parent reach out to me and ask a great question, um, asking me to clarify that I, I guess there, there was some discussion as to whether or not there was an expectation that the, that the students and staff who had opted in to the at-home testing were utilizing the at-home testing. And I thought that I didn't need to say that, but, um, I'm going to say that now that, and I'll kind of share that through principals too, that, you know, people shouldn't just be stockpiling these at-home tests. The expectation is, is that they're using them and reporting then if there's a positive case. Um, I did, a parent reached out to me and just said they had heard from a number of parents who had talked about not using them. And I thought that was strange. Um, so I say that and I will share that with our community as well too. Um, our, you know, our, our numbers have not necessarily, um, changed. So I feel like we're, we're, the bigger thing was, okay, what was going to be the transition between, you know, between being mask optional. I will say that, and I was surprised honestly, but I think, I know the reason, many cases, I was surprised to see the number of teachers that were, that were still choosing to wear masks because of just feedback that we had received previously about them looking forward to not, and I, and I truly think that, that a number of them are doing that just to make sure that everybody feels comfortable. And I think that that's great. Um, I feel like, you know, I haven't heard any reports from parents about concerns in terms of students feeling like their choice either way is, um, is not the correct choice.
Technical question.
Yeah.
So getting the home tests is like a two-week process. And, um, when I first signed up my middle schooler, I think I did not get in in time for that Friday's delivery. So for parents who are continuing to sign up, because I know that we're not, we're not at full capacity or 100%, if for parents who are still continuing to sign up, is there sort of, uh, like a sweet spot in the window where we know that if you sign up by this point in the cycle, you will get them for the na, the next one? Or that they should expect them for the next cycle after that? Because they have to come in, they have to be labeled, they have to be distributed. So I just, to set parent expectation, I'm wondering.
That's an excellent question that I don't have the answer to.
I didn't think you would.
When we originally started and then there was that, I knew we needed to hit a very specific deadline because we were trying to make sure we had, because they were trying to give everybody their test before February vacation. So let me double check. I do know that when they come in, the schools, the nurses specifically, I think have a great process in place. Because they come in, in NINA, can you, they, they, they come in usually on a Wednesday, right? They show up on the Wednesday before and they're, and they, I mean, the nurses will come here and collect, because they all come here.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a lot of work.
That's every week. So that's both the, the student weeks and the staff weeks.
Correct.
For distribution. It's Wednesday, it's every Wednesday.
Since we've come back from vacation, it was that way. Since we've come back from vacation, I didn't.
They do it so quietly.
Yeah.
I'm not sure when the order has to go.
Right.
Right.
So we'll double check and I'll communicate that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, I'll ask the, I'll write something up and ask the principals to put it in their Friday emails.
Okay, seeing no other COVID questions or comments, we are on to personnel update, which is in the packet. Anything we should be alerted to there or just?
No.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss a strategy with respect to Unit E collective bargaining as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. The committee will not return to public session.
Second.
I have a second, this is a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, I, I mean, aye.
Oh, the da joke, sir.
We are adjourned.